I'd like to call the order, the Clive City Council meeting for December fourteenth. Would the clerk please call roll? Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members Klein?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
And Michelannan is absent. Very good. If you all would rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Reapproval.
Second. Motion, second, approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next up, we have our citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for any citizen approached to council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, you can check to see if there's anyone online. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? While Pete is checking, I'll just remind everyone of our operating principles. We follow the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And we expect everyone who appears before us and appear to adhere to those principles. So do we have anyone, Pete, online?
No, your honor.
Very good. We'll move next to oath of office, and we have the opportunity to swear in two groups of people tonight. We're going to start with our newly re-elected council members. So Susan and Ted, why don't you go forward? Pete wants to take your picture as well. Where do you want us?
Well, I think we'll get too freaked out if we have, like, this picture with that picture and that picture happening. So why do we?
Too many Weavers is not a good.
So just as Ryan, if I say you were I, you say your own name. So raise your right hand. I?
I, Ted Weaver.
I, Susan Judkins.
You solemnly swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability?
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of council member?
Discharge all duties of the office of council member?
In the city of Clive?
In the city of Clive.
As now or hereafter required by law?
As now or hereafter required by law.
Your speech was great.
Weaver, there's a group back there might want a picture with. Oh, they've been here. They've been here. I watched them. We gotta get, we gotta get one with the Weaver boys. We gotta get one with the Weaver boys. He's dressed up?
Yeah.
Look at this.
Come on up, guys. Come on up. Come on up.
Come on.
He's got his dress blues on.
There we go. Looking sharp.
I don't want to get in there. Kyle's hair. That is beautiful. Thank you.
Do one more here, too.
There you go.
How we everybody can be friends?
Now, we also have the opportunity to move into swearing in us new officers. Chief?
All right. Good evening. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce three of our newest police officers for the city of Clive. Sarah Thayer has a bachelor of science in elementary education from Drake University and a master's in professional school counseling from Buena Vista University. Before becoming a police officer, she worked as a school counselor at Southeast Polk, and she previously was employed by the Altoona Police Department. She's a graduate of the 306th Basic Class at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, where she was elected class sergeant. Most recently, she was employed as an investigator for the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. Sarah has moved directly into our field training program, is currently on the street, except for right now. But Islam Mohammed was born in Jalalabad, Afghanistan. He immigrated to the United States at age eight with his mother and four siblings. His family settled in Clive. He graduated from Roosevelt High School in 2016. Before being hired by Clive, he worked as a detention officer at the Polk County Jail. He's multilingual, speaking English, Pashto, Farsi, and Urdu. He has worked as a volunteer at the Islamic Center of Des Moines, where he assisted with maintenance, fundraising, and teaching English to middle school kids. He will attend the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy beginning on January 3rd, 2024. Jeffrey Lamp has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Grandview University. He was raised in Polk City, attended North Polk High School, where he's active in baseball, football, and track. He played baseball when he attended Iowa Central Community College and then transferred to Grandview, where he continued to play baseball. In college, he started volunteering as a baseball coach at the grade school and high school level. He will also attend the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy beginning on January 3rd. Tonight, we'll do two separate oaths. The first oath is what is required by the state of Iowa. It's the law enforcement oath of office. And then in Clive, we go one step further, and we have an oath of honor that we ask our officers to take and to keep in mind every day on the street. So mayor?
Thank you.
Take it away.
And with the council members, I will say aye, and you will say your name. So if you could, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I? You solemnly swear? That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability?
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of police officer?
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
For the city of Clive?
For the city of Clive.
As now and hereafter required by law?
As now and hereafter, as required by law.
Congratulations. Now, we have the next oath, the law enforcement oath of honor. So if you could repeat after me, raise your right hand. On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never?
I will never.
Betray my badge?
Betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold?
I always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others accountable?
Myself and others accountable.
For our actions?
For our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution?
I always uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the agency I serve?
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations again.
Next, we're going to have a family member come up and pin on their badge, I believe. Mohammed and Jeff have their moms, and Thayer's got, Thayer has her husband? Husband and daughter.
Richard, you have an aquatic season overview.
Yeah, I will actually let Austin do most of the talking, but before he does that, I just wanted to publicly thank him for all the work he does. He spends all spring and summer working with up to 100 college and high school kids, which is not an easy job, and he does it with a smile on his face. Even usually includes a couple of council member Weaver's kids, which makes it a little bit harder, but does a great job and. But I just, you know, it takes a big team to get this done, and Austin does an amazing job with that. And so with that, I'll turn over to Austin and give it over.
He just received an award.
So, yeah. Yeah. All right. Hello, Mayor Edwards and City Council. Again, like Richard said, my name is Austin Tassler, Recreation Coordinator. I'm going to give you a brief recap of our 2023 season. I'll start with attendance. We were open 79 days, six days fully closed, six days partially closed due to weather. Attendance was 56,416 for the 2023 season. Highest was on June 29th, lowest was on July 7th, with a daily average of 714 patrons. So a huge contributor to our numbers is always weather for that season. Here's just a quick trend. Again, we've had our highest attendance in the last seven years at 56,000. Some of those financials for the season for 2023 had a difference of about 69,000. Over the last eight seasons, you can kind of see those differences, and hopefully we'll continue to close that gap a little bit more. Moving to pass sales, had a total pass sales of 3,179. That first number in that first column you see is just the transaction number. So if I had a family of five, that's one transaction versus if I had a five-member pass, five people away online. So as you can see on there, Clive had 437 transactions, but had more passes than Urbendale listed there. So top sales by city is Clive, Urbendale, Grimes, Johnson, Waukees, and Des Moines. Into our partnership, we still have an agreement with West Des Moines with a pass sharing accessibility there. So we had 6,444 passes, Clive passes used at West Des Moines, and 4,962 West Des Moines passes used at Clive. So a difference of 1,482. We did pay them out this year, $5,928. Our other partnership is with Urbendale. This is our third year of that partnership, where they cover the difference from resident versus non-resident, and they paid us out $28,542. Onto program attendance. We increased our program offering times for water walking and lap swimming, and that increased our attendance by 53%. Increased our annual pooch plunge to 211 dogs, 27% increase there. Toddler time was again successful. This is our second year of having different timeframes offered Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for that. Stand-up paddleboard and water X, which is our exercise class, and then swim lessons as well.
Great looking dogs on there, too, Austin.
I think so as well, yeah. That's Eric's dog, by the way. Onto Crestview Scholars. This is our second season with our Crestview Scholars. Last year, or first year that we did this, in 2022, we had K through sixth grade. They expanded that program to K through eight, so we did improve those numbers. We had 82 kids that got swim lessons this last year. For those of you that are unfamiliar with our Crestview Scholar Program, we partner with them. They are students through Crestview, handpicked by their teachers. Most are on free and reduced lunch. They are new to the country within two years, so a lot of them, English is their second language. So that graph just shows you their home language of what is spoken. And again, just a lot of them have never been to a pool and have never taken a swim lesson. So we're able to provide that into a first-class facility, which is fantastic. Our hope is to have a larger scholarship program ahead for next pool season and expand these offerings as well. Move on to our other season highlights. So first, want to take a quick second and thank our fantastic parts team. Would not have as a successful summer as we do without their help, making sure that our operations run seamlessly and smooth all season long. They also do a great job with making sure that our facility is a first-class facility despite it being 20 years old. We've had some new program offerings. Top left corner, you see we did our cardboard, our Clive Fest Cardboard Boat Regatta, which was successful, had a great time with that event. Again, adding to our Clive Fest offerings. We expanded our program times, like I mentioned, and water walking and lap swim, and that's one of our biggest programs is our water walking. Those walkers love that. So like I said, we went up 50, 53% in attendance on that, which is awesome. Want to thank our fire department as well. Again, we do our preseason training with them, our emergency action training, making sure that we know our role, they know their role, in case that we do have an emergency, that everything goes to plan and that we're successful in that. I'm still continuing to co-teach at the lifeguard or the lifeguard course at Valley High School. This gets my foot in the door. We teach all of our lifeguard classes in the winter there and gives me kind of first crack at hiring those students after they become certified, which has been nice. And then again, we are also just voted best outdoor aquatic facility by the Des Moines Parents Group, which is a huge accolade. Again, we beat out one of my former pools, Cascade Falls, which is a pretty big facility. So a huge achievement there.
Good cardboard program. We're going to get even, Nitro Waste Authority was a proud sponsor of a team.
Those t-shirts are on there, I think, yeah.
We have decided in our strategic plan, we're doubling down. We're going to partner with Iowa State Engineering. We're going to get our team up there, get into the aerodynamics.
I think it's hydrodynamics for the water, right?
Iowa State doesn't have that program, but we do have a aerodynamic program. So we're going to get in there, take this thing serious.
All right. Love that. Love that. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to staffing. We had a great summer staff this season, and we're adequate staff. Again, want to thank my bosses, Jeff and Richard, and then, of course, you guys, the council, for continuing to support us, the facility, and being competitive with our wages. That's really been successful. That makes my life a little bit easier when we are able to be fully staffed each summer. We had about 142 aquatics employees, 50% is our new, 102 lifeguards, four managers and one lesson coordinator, 27 concession admission, team members, 26 swim instructors, and 24 swim lesson aides. Those typically double as lifeguards. We do have some admissions concession staff that also help in that swim lesson program. Two water exercise instructors and two water safety instructor trainers. So I am one of those. Wendy is on the top right. She obtained that certification this last year. It's a week-long course in Iowa City. We were able to get her in that course while she did the rest of the work on that. We are two out of the 60 in the state, which enables us to, again, teach better swim lesson instructors, to, again, provide better swim lessons for our community. So those are huge accomplishments that we're excited about and having those kind of in our back pocket to enable us to continue to be successful with that swim lesson program. This is our save map. Again, we rely a lot on our young adults in the summer to ensure that we have a safe swimming environment for our community. So after a save has been made, those employees will be able to put their initial and then mark where that save was made. So that also identifies some of our hotspots, which continue to be our hotspots and are just a little bit more aware and a little more attentive of those areas when we are a little bit busier. In addition to our 74 rescues that we had this summer, we also had 88 first aid incidents that are not recorded on this. But just again, kudos to our staff for another safe and fun summer. Onto some facility improvements. We continue to plan for ongoing maintenance and improvements in the pool for them to keep in working, good working order. So these are just a few of those items that were taken care of last season. We purchased a backup chem controller, lounge chairs, which is an annual purchase. We paint one pool each season, replace two circulation pumps for our leisure in our lap pool, purchased a new diving board, remove some of the mulch and landscape and added rock. That's helped keep the pools a little bit more clear. A lot of the times when you have storms or whatnot, that mulch blows in, and so this kept our water walkers happy, too, which is always a win. And then replaced our UV ballast for our pools.
How do your slides look as you move forward?
They're looking great. Exterior, we had Fisher Brothers out before my time, but we're looking at those with our ongoing maintenance plan. So with those future outlooks, our goal is to keep up with the maintenance while staying competitive in an ever-changing market. We're evaluating our wages and our fees, evaluating our facility aesthetics and amenities, and improving or implementing our new program offerings to keep us relevant. And that is our 2023 season.
Great job, Austin. Questions?
Austin, can you go back to the financials?
Sure.
So that first bar graph, I think that's supposed to be labeled 2016. We were basically break even at that point. You know, when we got a little bit further in 1921, I think it was certainly, I think it was like 18 to 19. I did the math, and it was like, there's about a 20% difference between revenue and expenses. And then this past year, it was an improvement, maybe, I think it was somewhere around 8% or so difference between those. Do you know what the difference is between those years? I mean, clearly, it's not just attendance, right? Because in 2016, we were break even, but we had more attendance this past year. So do you have any sense for what would cause that and how we, if there's a way to bridge that gap a little bit more?
Sure. Yeah. So a few of those things, again, are wages or whatnot. We bumped those up a little bit for our staff. We've also bumped some of our pass wages up this last year to close that gap a little bit more and have some other cost recovery items that we're looking at for the future to hopefully continue to bridge that gap. And I think Richard has a few others. I can try to fill in a little bit more on, beyond what Austin said. You know, I think what you see between the 2018 until we got to probably the 2021 season, that was when Lifetime opened up, and so we did start to see a dip in our attendance for a while, when that was a brand-new facility, being so close to the facility we have here. And then once that had been open for a few years, we're starting to see our tenants go back up. And we've also adjusted revenues based on the admission fees as well as season passes. That's helped increase our revenues along the way as well. We're doing everything we can to try to close that gap a little bit each year. I think we're about $10,000 smaller than we were the previous fiscal year. But we're trying to balance that out between being relevant in the market and pricing people out of the facility. So that's kind of a delicate balance that we're trying to figure out, and Austin and the team have been really doing a good job looking at a lot of the different programming options, adjusting when, like, the water walkers tried to adjust that to make sure we could still have as much time in the pool for lessons and other revenue-enhancing ideas without taking too much away from that. And then we'll continue to look at ways to make sure that we can get as many people in there as possible. We're evaluating and reaching out to other communities to see if they have an interest in doing a similar agreement like we did with Urbendale. We found that that's been a big increase in the number of people of residence from Urbendale that are getting pulled passes. We think that something like that could be successful as well. So we're kind of constantly evaluating ideas, finding ways to keep costs down. But we saw chemicals go up, you know, anywhere from 30 to 80% in the last two years, and that's a big expense out there as well. So.
No, and I appreciate all that, and it's clearly been a very successful season, so definitely kudos for that. Last question I had was on that Crestview Scholars thing. So do we have, like, a capacity limit that we can't go past or that we're trying to get to? And what are the cost implications for that?
Sure. So we don't have, we've not set a limit right now. I've been working with Richard and Jeff to find that number, expanding that without giving up spots to our Clive community members. Again, these kids are from Clive majority, so not getting rid of them. But as far as cost, it's just our instructors at this point. Again, if I'm saying $65 is what our lessons cost for eight 30-minute lessons at this point. But again, it's more just our cost for our instructors. So again, with our WSITs, hopefully we can get a few more instructors and be able to offer a bigger capacity.
$65 for how many lessons?
It's eight 30-minute lessons. It's two weeks, Monday through Thursday.
And then, you know, I'm with Ted. I don't think he's implying that we need to make money at the Aquatic Center, right? And I think that's where he is as well, and with the break even would be nice. So to start looking at those real costs, because you start adding an Urbendale into this mix, should have probably righted that ship a little bit more, and so maybe we need to catch up with our expenses without putting ourselves out of the market. And then also perhaps raising that money for that $65 at eight times 30, you know, that 65 and how many kids? Somewhere in the foundation or something, because those are real costs we're incurring. I like the program, as you know, I mean, I wanted to expand even bigger to summer passes and things for some of these kids, right? But let's try to figure out a nonprofit or some donations that can fill that gap.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And one of the things Austin has been doing, and actually, we just attended the Chamber event this morning. He was able to write a grant that we received through the Clive Chambers President's Grant Cycle, supports this direct program. So that helps to offset some of the costs that come with that, to help offer that Crestview Scholars program. And then the hope is, longer term, that we'll work to find ways to supplement revenue loss with a scholarship program. So it's offsetting cost.
Yeah. One thing that we've been talking about, too, with these agreements with these neighboring communities like Urbendale, and if that were to expand, it's the non-resident fee is charged, and the city is making up that difference and basically treating them as residents. Now, one thing we want to be mindful of is, is that non-resident fee truly covering the costs for, that our taxpayers are varying for the cost of the facility itself? And so because essentially those other communities, like in Urbendale, are kind of getting the kind of, we don't want to make sure that they're getting a free pass on some of that. So we want to be mindful of that in the market, though, too, in terms of not, you know, again, pricing ourselves out on the non-resident rate to still be attractive there. And so it's diving into those numbers and seeing what that balance is. But that's something, as we look at these agreements going forward and renewals of these agreements, just being mindful of that. And those are some things that we'll talk about going forward related to the facility. I like that we're getting closer. Right. Because on the wage side, where it is, it is an extremely competitive environment, and that has definitely outpaced our revenue increases in terms of what we had to do to remain competitive on the wage side. So what are some other things that we can inch a little bit closer will be important?
The tough one, because I think you guys are employed first, you know, before most other pools in the city. And without that, so the wage increase helps with that, plus your culture helps with that. Rather take a little bit of a loss and have it open than some of these other cities not even opening for weeks, right? And taking huge losses, so.
I can tell you for sure that the teenagers are looking at that wage number and deciding where they want to go to work. So.
Yeah.
So it is important. There's no doubt.
Richard, there's a referendum, and I know there's been talk about this in Waukees for now. So refresh my memory on how that turned out and if there's any opportunities to collaborate with Waukees in the future.
So right now, they're just in the study phase. So they're doing surveys to get gauge support from residents as well as non-residents on their willingness to do a referendum out there. I believe they're looking at possibly doing that in 2024. And then if that passes, it'd probably be about three to five years before a facility opened. Matt and I have already talked about, should a referendum pass out there, we'll want to engage them probably pretty quickly on talking about some sort of regional kind of west-side pool pass, similar to what we do with West Des Moines, to find ways to maximize all the opportunities out here so we can compete against the, you know, the Adventure Lands and some of those type of things. And one way you can do that is offering more offerings with a pool pass. So right now, we have a lot of, there's a lot of value being able to get into the two West Des Moines pools with a Clive pass. And same with the West Des Moines pass, you get into the Clive pool. If we're able to do that with a new pool in Waukees, that would even more increase the value and try to keep us all on the same page.
Great job. Thank you. Next, we have our consent items.
Reapproval.
Second. Motion and a second on the consent item. Further discussion, seeing none, would council please vote? And would council please post that vote? And our consent item passed for the zero. Pete, you have someone to introduce to us?
Thank you, your honor. It's a privilege this evening to introduce, my person will be my newest colleague, Molly Elder. It's a privilege this evening to introduce my person will be my newest colleague, Molly Elder. Molly was one of many excellent candidates we received for the communication specialist position this year. And whittling down to the best wasn't easy, but we ended up with the best today with Molly. She comes to us from, most recently, the state of Iowa. But prior to that, she had a very distinguished career with the United States Air Force doing communications work. And with that, I will turn it over to Molly to tell you a few things about herself and we'll talk about when she's getting started.
Thank you very much, Pete, and good evening, council members. Thank you very much for having me today. It's a pleasure to be here. And I'd like to thank Pete, Matt, and the City of Clive for giving me this opportunity to be a part of the team. I have over 10 years of experience in communications. I started as a public affairs specialist and broadcast journalist in the Air Force. And what was unique about that role, I was stationed in an Air Force base where it worked as a township. And so that was kind of my first experience working within a little, a little community and a kind of a public affairs capacity there. And after that, I was the, I worked as the digital communications manager for Iowa Workforce Development. I'm really passionate about the communications career field because it's constantly changing and it gives me a lot of opportunities to grow professionally as well. But I'm pleased to be here and be a part of the team, starting in the new year. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We've been talking about this position for a long time. I'm sure Pete told you. So you've got a lot of work to do, but we're excited to have you.
All right. Excited to be here. Thank you.
We'll be covering a lot of the areas of responsibility that Molly will be taking on when we talk about the community engagement plan for 2024 at the end of this meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Pete. Next, we'll move into our action items. We have five public hearings and did we publish appropriate public notice for all of them?
All five of the public hearing notices were published in the Des Moines Register on November 29th, 2023.
Very good. Well, we'll start with the budget amendment number one, Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you this evening is our annual process to go back through and amend our budget, which was adopted 39 months ago. In the memo, I outlined the overall changes that we've that we all made, and I'm really happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
Any questions for Liz or anyone on the chamber who wishes to address the council on this matter?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Is there further discussion? If not, would council please vote on closing the public hearing? And will clerk please post that vote? Public hearing is closed by a vote of four to zero.
With the resolution proving FY '24 amendment number one.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, would council please vote? And then would clerk please post that vote? And that resolution passes by voter four to zero. Next up, we have our CIP and Doug. Again, we already acknowledged the publication.
Good evening. What's before you tonight is consideration of the final production of the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan for the city of Clive. As we went through in quite a bit of detail at the workshop last month, we do have a proposed plan that includes almost $110 million of investment in our community. I'm not going to go through individual projects or address the big parts of the plan, because again, we spent quite a bit of time working through that in November, and there's not been any significant change since the conversation that did occur at the workshop. At this point, I'd be happy answering questions that you might have on the plan. Otherwise, staff would recommend approval.
Any questions for Doug or anyone in the council chambers that would like to address us on this matter?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote to close the public hearing? And the public hearing is closed by a vote of four to zero.
With the resolution proving 2024, 2028 capital improvement plan.
Motion a second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote and the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Doug, you're up again on asbestos removal.
Asbestos and demolition. We are at a point along Alice's Road where we have three properties that the city has acquired over the last 12 months that are ready for demolition. These are properties that will be ultimately consumed as part of the Alice's Road widening project. At this point, we did solicit responses from contractors, local contractors for the asbestos abatement and the demolition of the structures. We did receive four complete bids, two that were rejected as incomplete. We felt that the bid spread and the low bid were right in line with what we were expecting. We have worked with the apparent low J-Pedic cord on previous projects. And at this point, we would recommend approval of the plans and specs, the receipt of the bid, and ultimately the resolution awarding the contract to J-Pedic cord for $67,212.40. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Doug or questions from anyone in the chamber?
With close of public public hearing.
Motion second, close public hearing, further discussion, seeing none, would council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And the public hearing is closed by a vote of four to zero.
Move a resolution approving plans and specs.
Motion second to approve plans and specs, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That's approved by a vote of four to zero.
Who would receive the bids?
Motion second, receive the bids, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of four to zero.
And move the resolution awarding the contract to J-Pedic cord Incorporated for $67,212.40.
Motion a second to approve the contract, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Next up, we have Jeff on Little Walnut Creek.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm here to give you good news. We received bids for the Little Walnut Creek Streambank Stabilization east of Alice's Road. The bids we received were quite good. Low bid was with Iowa Dirt Works, which is, or Iowa Earthworks, excuse me, from Huxley, Iowa. Their price bid of 762,000 roughly was quite a bit less than the engineer's estimate. We also received several bids that were less, in fact, all the bids were less than the engineer's estimate. While we haven't worked with Iowa Earthworks, we talked to the city of Waukees, who's had them as subs out there. They're very pleased with their work. Good, good things to say, and we're very happy with them. So one big question was why so low? We did a little bit of looking and talking. Right now, as we talk with the underground people, it was a great year for them. They've got a lot of work done. They didn't have any rain delays. Bids are coming in low on a lot of things. The weather continues to stay good. And I think it's attributed, could be attributed to some hungry people that want to get some work done yet this year and and keep busy through the winter. So with that, looking at the bids we received, we are recommending that you award the bid to Iowa Earthworks. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions. Ted, so Jeff, you mentioned in the memo about the fact that they they haven't done stream restoration work. How did they mitigate your concerns with respect to that function?
Well, there's probably very few people that have done that type of work in our area. We did receive one bid from Minnesota, about $500,000, half a million dollars more to to get someone that has that experience. The the earthwork itself is common. Some of the stream bank stabilization work we're doing is not similar to when we undertook Indian Hills. We learned as we went, and I think we did a good job with it. I think this contractor is in a similar position where they're looking to do some work. And we will probably have a little more handholding along the way to work with them to get started, similar to what we had to do with our crews as we got going. But once they got going and started repeating the work, it became secondhand. I think we got a contractor that can do it. So from that standpoint, I think we're comfortable with it. Is it absolutely perfect? No, but we'll learn together and I think they're reputable enough contractor that we're willing to work with them.
Right. I think if we get more contractors in Iowa here locally doing this work, because we have a big stretch to do west of Alice's Road coming up, the the more contractors and to see this mix will be beneficial for us because we've got a lot more stream restoration to do. So.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and that's one of my concerns as well. And so I I'm all for giving the shot. Would they be doing the the work themselves? Do you know, or they'd be contracting?
Yeah, they're eager. They're wanting to pre-con next week and wanting to start clearing and grebling shortly thereafter. So we have a lot of work to get doing. So yes.
I just hope we remember this conversation when the next bid comes out, right? Because we're educating this group on our backs a bit, I think, and we're going to see possibly some delays and other things. So when the bids come out next time, we don't gravitate to this one saying, well, they've they're the only ones that have done work before, but yet there's another one, $300,000, $200,000 cheaper. We should give them the chance too, because the only way you're going to, or the only way you're going to build that bullpen is by giving multiples the chance and.
Absolutely.
Right. I am nervous on ones like this that haven't done the work and you say we're going to learn together. I hope they understand it's not a green light for change orders and delays and rain days and everything else. Because this was a project that we all agreed on putting out this winter and getting it done this winter.
Yes, and that is still the hope. You know, weather itself, we can't control, but you know, we will push them through and and you know, work with that as part of, I think, why they're wanting to get started. Part of the clearing and grubbing includes harvesting trees with root balls to make sure they have it. Reason they want to start is they want to get ahead of the ground freezing so they can preserve that and keep the trees that they harvest in as good a condition as possible for the work they need to do. So I think they've taken some due diligence to look at the project and understand what they need to do. Again, you just approved a supplemental with Stan Tech on this with some engineering services to help us in our side, on the inspection side. We plan to do most of it in-house, but we are going to lean on them a little bit to help us get started as well. So hopefully it'll result in much more savings on the west side.
Sure. My only other concern is, again, I think it's pressing that issue. I mean, we have a lot of this in my day job too, right, of of the dirt moving and you move it at this time and you guess wrong, not you, them, guess wrong, getting in there. You also will freeze, which is wonderful, but they don't get back in in the spring right away. And the erosion issues are twice as bad because you grubbed and you scraped and you did all that this winter. And they don't push hard enough to get it done. So anyways, all eyes on this project is the message next week when you meet with them.
We hear you. Thank you.
Other, other questions or anyone in the chamber to address this?
Close public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. Is there further discussion? If not, would council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution proving plans and specifications.
Second.
Motion a second on plans and specs, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that? That passes by a vote of four to zero.
Who's received bids?
Second.
Motion and a second to receive the bids, further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution for the contract Iowa Earthworks for $762,452.95.
Second.
Motion a second on the contract award, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Next public hearing is on the sanitary sewer lining program, Jeff.
Some more good news, some good bids, not quite as good as the others, but they came in pretty tight, right around engineer's estimate for our annual sewer lining program. Hopefully, the next seven years or so, we'll get all the clay lines completely lined and so a lot of those concerns that we have with those lines. So with that said, HydroClean was the apparent low bidder. They had our contract last year, finished it up on time and very quickly. We're looking forward to working with them on this one. Their bid of $183,508.70 was 1.22% above our estimate. But then the next bid was 2.2, 3.85, 5.65, tight, real tight, in such form. I don't think one did real bad, but we'd take it for the right number. So looking at that, we're going to recommend that the award go to HydroClean.
It's always good to have a vendor that we've worked with before that's done a good job and that has the lowest bid. I mean, that's a perfect storm for for City of Clive right there. So great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff or from the chamber?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion second, close public hearing, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote?
I had to get someone on the left of this chamber.
Will clerk please post that vote? Public hearing is closed by a vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Motion second on the plans and specs, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero.
Who's received bids?
Second.
Motion second, receive the bids, further discussion, seeing none, would council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution awarding contract HydroClean $183,508.70.
Second.
Motion second to award the contract, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Next item is the potential third consideration of ordinance number 1141 in Clive Hotel and Suites. That was put on the table at our prior meeting. So to take it off and discuss it, we need a motion to bring it off the table.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion second to take it off the table, further discussion, if not, would council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. It is off the table and eligible for discussion. Doug?
Thank you. As indicated, we have the third consideration of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for the Clive Hotel and Suites property that would allow for the rezoning, current, current zoning of C2 to a proposed planned unit development. The designation would allow for multifamily residential use of the property in addition to the commercial uses that are allowed under the C2 zoning, just for your recollection. Since the last time we talked about this project, staff have been working with the developer to address the questions and comments that you folks had at the last meeting. The two primary issues that have been resolved and are reflected in the proposed zoning change and development agreement that was in your packet addressed questions around the crime-free multifamily housing responsibility. We did get clarity around the language that was necessary in the agreement, and the developer has taken the steps necessary to ensure that they're able to complete the program through the seminar that is necessary for the property managers. Because the seminar is only provided once a year through the city of Des Moines. It will be upcoming in the spring, but the developer, again, has taken the steps necessary to make sure that they're able to attend that class and then get the certification for both the vibe property as well as this project if it's moved forward. A second issue that has been resolved from the previous discussion was surrounding the Parkland dedication provision. As you will recall, the proposal previously was to incorporate the dollars associated with the Parkland dedication into the property improvements themselves. Based on the discussion, staff and the developer have reworked that a bit to accommodate some payment to the city, which would be similar to the assignment that was established for the vibe property. In order to make that contribution to the city that will be used or able to be used for Green Belt or other park-related improvements, the developer did have to rework some of the proposed common area amenities as part of the proposed project. Uh, developer did have to rework some of the proposed common area amenities as part of the proposed project. Uh, so a few minor uh, reductions in the improvements themselves. Uh, but they are able to make the contribution to the city uh, to address that Parkland dedication, and that's reflected in the agreement. Uh, there was one minor provision that uh, was a was brought up uh, in terms of the uh, change to the common area amenities. Uh, one of those elements was taking the uh, proposed mailbox or package room that was internal to the lobby and placing that outside as a cost savings. Uh, the developers, uh, understanding the uh, the questions and concerns that were raised potentially around safety of that aspect. And the developer has uh, agreed that that uh, service can be still accommodated in the lobby if it's a question or concern of of the group. So uh, again, if that is an issue, those facilities can certainly be accommodated inside the lobby space. Uh, just in a small or scaled down in a situation from the original proposal. Otherwise, uh, uh, at this point, staff believes we've addressed all of the questions and concerns that were outstanding. At this point, you are uh, being requested to consider the third consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment itself. And with that would come the approval of the zoning change and development agreement, which would outline all the responsibilities of the property moving forward. Uh, if it is approved, the developer will then uh, progress with uh, some metal of building plans, site plans uh, and so forth, and would be back before you to receive those approvals uh, in the near future. But otherwise renovations to the property would uh, would start after the first of the year. And I would anticipate that uh, uh, the facility would be converted to multifamily residential uh, over the course of the next twelve months. Developers here, uh, happy to address any questions that you might have and uh, similarly, I'll uh, address anything you have outstanding on the zoning change and development agreement.
Questions for Doug?
I will if no one else does. Um, so appreciate all the hard work on this, Doug, and 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 from Jason as well and uh, everything that all the hours and and effort that's gone into this. Um, I I support it. I I think it's the right thing to do. My biggest heartburn on this is the name change. Can we not change it to something else? I mean, it's just, it's 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 difficult for me to swallow. Jason, I don't know if you want to address that.
Um, so I chose the name of the property because my son is nine years old and his name is McCoy. And uh, not to take away from council member, but uh, he's he's nine years old and exudes character counts and he really inspires me to be a better human every day. And with that being said, the the definition of McCoy is the real deal. And so I have a whole marketing plan based on based on the name. So and then we were pairing it with uh, eighty thirty-five to go along with uh, the vibe so we can brand that together.
But what I will say on the the mailbox thing is um, for me personally, I don't care. Uh, we have lots of new construction, um, housing areas that have shared outside mailboxes. So to me, that that should be up to the developer and let him decide what he wants to do with it.
My knowledge, that was agreed on already, right? I mean, that's in the development agreement. So it's a moot point to discuss. I mean, tonight it's it's in there as part of that.
The mailbox.
Yeah, yeah. I I one of my hangups is this, um, and maybe it's a Christina question is what is the remedy if there is no certification of crime-free housing? You know, by the spring or July, or I mean, should we not set a date? And then what is the remedy anyways if they don't do it? Because they're already building, remodeling, it's up and running. There's no certification.
I may uh, give my opinion on that, and then certainly Christina can uh, weigh in on any other legal remedies that the city might have. From the city uh, staff perspective, these multifamily residential units are part of the city or will be part of the city's rental housing code program. So a certificate is necessary to occupy a multifamily residential unit regardless of of the location in the city. In the event that uh, the property is not able to comply with the responsibilities of the development agreement, uh, they would uh, be subjected potentially to revocation of their rental certificate for the rental units. Uh, in addition to uh, breach of the zoning change and development agreement, which may have other legal uh, processes associated with it.
You know.
Good comment.
We have any other questions for Doug or the developer? We're looking at here is potential third consideration.
I would move that ordinance number one one four one be considered pla- placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion, second on the third consideration, further discussion. If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that?
Unlike Weaver, I am voting in favor of her nine-year-old son.
What? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Ordinance number one one four one is declared to have been enacted. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you. McCoy thanks you.
Brutal. Jeff, I think you're back up here. Neon lights too. I mean, I hear it's blinking.
Well, we'll get back to uh, work here. Mayor Council here, uh, next item is the memorandum of understanding with the city of Waukees for the reconstruction of Alice's Road, which entails the work of reconstructing Alice's Road from where the Waukees left off down by Hy-Vee there, just north of Hickman, all the way up to just south of Meredith. Plus the intersection of Douglas, the intersection of Berkshire and Hickman, and the completion of Douglas from through that corridor from Berkshire to our west corporate limit. So uh, that's the overall project. We're here tonight talking about phase one, which the memorandum of understanding covers. Uh, it's divided up into some several phases and and the purpose being uh, we want to do the project right. We want to look at everything throughout the corridor, including the aspects of stormwater, the aspects of a trail, aesthetics. Uh, you know, e- everything we need to start looking at some of the grants, uh, look at what it's going to take to cross uh, Little Walnut Creek and give ourselves a little better idea of what's going on. So this project not only includes the complete design of phase one, it also includes uh, the look at phase two, the concepts plus everything associated with the other phases throughout there. We divided a this memorandum, uh, contract professional services into three divisions. Division one covers those related to the first phase, which is the full reconstruction. Uh, that's approximately a fifty fifty split with us in Waukees. Uh, phase two, uh, unfortunately is a little more mucky. Uh, there's a lot of work to do for us as we work through the design press process to determine exactly how much of that phase will be attributed to us and how much to Waukees. So there's no exact number in there, but it will come down. We've agreed to, based on the amount of construction in each phase, we will split those costs accordingly. So and then division three is everything north and everything that will be one hundred percent Clive. So it's kind of how the memorandums divided up. And uh, any questions, I'll be glad to answer them about the memorandum of understanding.
Questions for Jeff? Otherwise, we just need a motion to prove the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And the MOU passes by a vote of four to zero. Continue, Jeff.
All right. Well, to get to this point, uh, we sent out some requests for qualifications. Uh, we sat down with council or and reviewed what we were requesting at previous meeting. Uh, we received those RFQs, Waukees and us, City of Clive sat down, selected a consultant to proceed with. Uh, from the review of the RFQs, we selected Snyder and Associates. Snyder's with us here tonight. I'll have Gabe come up here in a second. He would like to address you. Uh, but uh, after selecting consultant, we sat down and started working on the scope, uh, talked about everything in detail to kind of help understand what would be necessary. Uh, this project has a lot of facets, uh, from not only the pavement, trails all the way through there, stormwater, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water. Uh, there's acquisitions for right-of-way easements that are necessary through their grant funding that's necessary uh, to help us fund all this. Uh, so they're going to pay, play a big part of all that as we move forward. Uh, after developing the scope, uh, we've worked with them to then put the professional services agreement together. Uh, the amount of that professional services agreement is one million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's a big number. Uh, but it's a lot of work. Uh, when you look at the the division of the funds, uh, most of that's probably going to be ours. Uh, it is ours, actually, probably about a million and a half or a little bit more of that will be ours. Uh, because there's a lot of work we're doing conceptually on the future phases. It will put us in a position to start looking at grants and additional funding. Help us uh, better understand and coordinate all the work so that what we do in the first phase is actually fits and makes a nice transition through the whole project. So uh, with that, I'll let Gabe come up. He would like to say something and and introduce himself.
Yeah, I gave Nelson. I'm an engineer at Snyder and Associates uh, in Ankeny and um, just wanted to, I'll be leading our design team on this one and just wanted to introduce myself. And uh, also uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to uh, thank you for this opportunity. This is certainly a great project to be involved with. Uh, it's going to be a transformative project through that two-mile corridor. It's going to look completely different by the time we uh, get all said and done with it. And it's just, we're really excited to get get started on this project. So with that, I can answer any questions you have, uh, but just wanted to make sure I say that.
I just found out today that uh, there is an intersection in this project that he drives through every day and he's really excited about improving. So yeah, there's some personal interest in there.
Yeah, I live at about one hundred and twenty-eighth and Meredith at Urbendale, and I work out at the Waukees Y. So I drive through there all the time. I always thought, man, I'd really like to fix this intersection. So thank you. I would, I'd love to work out this.
One thing I will add too, that you'll notice in the scope of services is uh, some uh, public input uh, processes that Snyder will be supporting. This will obviously be in collaboration with our staff, but there'll be some uh, some specific engagement with the entire corridor, but also some specific neighborhoods. Whether it's stormwater related and one that I've had some conversations with the Waukees School Superintendent about recently is the intersection of Douglas and Berkshire and the ultimate resolution of that intersection with the elementary school there. That is an item that we'll be engaging the neighborhood on because they were very engaged in the elementary school boundary discussion related to that particular intersection. So that is something that I've mentioned to the superintendent that will keep the schools engaged as we look at that Douglas piece, just as well as obviously, the Alice's Road portion is the bigger portion of the corridor. But it's kind of coming up with some final resolutions of some of these intersections, not just on Alice's Road. And I wanted to mention that as a part of this scope uh, of services in terms of the design effort and the conceptual design that we'll be working on. So there'll be a lot of engagement in twenty twenty-four um, with that corridor, the neighborhood surrounding it on this project because we're, again, we're conceptually designing the whole stretch. So this will be that opportunity to really engage. And then we're into detailed design. But one very big element also of this is, and you saw some of it earlier tonight, is the right-of-way acquisition with three properties that we're demolishing. There's still a number of properties to go. And this is part where we still have the boundary items that we're still working on with the city of Waukees, where some of these parcels are still in the city of Waukees versus Clive that we're going to have to sort through over the next couple of years. And there'll be some big decisions that will have to be made to get to that resolution to ultimately build this five-lane roadway through this corridor.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're looking for a resolution here.
Move resolution. Second.
Motion, second on the resolution, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote?
Thanks for coming in, Gabe.
Thank you.
That passes by a vote of four to zero. Good luck.
Please, Gabe.
Next up, we have a public hearing just set on the Ninety-Ninth Court reconstruction. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, oriented here.
Are we sure this road really needs attention?
I mean, we we left that in the rearview mirror. We're just proceeding with what we're told we're supposed to do out there. But I think the answer we all know is yes, right? Um, yeah, I wanted to talk briefly about a couple of reconstruction projects that we have on the horizon coming up this construction season. The map on Ninety-Ninth Court that I'll be referring to is included in your packet. Um, this will be a full reconstruction of Ninety-Ninth Court between Lincoln Avenue and Clark Street as shown. As you're aware, when we're doing a full reconstruction, that's more than just the street. Uh, we'll be removing, removing or replacing all public utilities, so sanitary, water and storm, similar to the work we've undertaken in recent years on uh, Clark and Harbaugh. Um, I know you're also aware of uh, on those projects on Clark and Harbaugh that we were not able to complete those in one year. So we're trying to take some steps here um, to remedy that if we can. Um, the one thing that's working in our favor right off the bat is just the overall project length. This is about fifteen hundred foot um, from from one end to the other. Those other projects were closer to two thousand, nineteen hundred feet or so. So right off the bat, um, that gives us a little better chance, um, just based on the sheer size of the project. But in addition to that, we would be um, proposing some um, incentives and disincentives for you to consider. Some of you may recall, we did something similar on, it's been ten years. So some of you may might not recall, um, on twenty, on on Lincoln Avenue just west of here, um, we did some incentives and disincentives. We're using that kind of as a framework to start. That project was a little different, not as much underground work. I included some bullet points in the memo about um, how we're proposing those incentives. Um, the project is split into three stages on the way that's laid out and just the way the neighborhood has to circulate. The contractor will not be able to work on two stages at once. So once they start on the stage, um, the completion date for that stage would be set. If they meet that completion date, there would be an incentive for that stage of twenty-five thousand dollars. Then they'd move to the next um, stage and the same for stages two and three. If they meet those completion dates, there would be a per-stage completion uh, through each of twenty-five thousand dollars. So the maximum staged incentive could be seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, in addition to that, and similar to what we did in twenty fourteen, independent of the stage construction, there would be an overall completion date. Um, and we've set that for early November, November eighth. So if they complete the project by that time, there would be an additional fifty thousand one-time incentive payment. So total incentives on all that is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So our total um, opinion probable cost right now is two point five million. So that represents five percent of that overall project cost that we have in place right now. And that kind of relies on some federal highway administration guidance as far as um, what incentives could or should be capped at. So we're kind of following that. Guess the other end of the spectrum, if for whatever reason they're not completed on November eighth, um, and they would um, they continue construction, if they still aren't complete, three weeks later, the end of the month, there would be a disincentive of twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm sure the weather is going to be just like this year. So if they're still not done, they'll continue working in December. And if they're still not done by the end of December, there would be one other disincentive of twenty-five thousand dollars. So total disincentives would be fifty thousand dollars. Um, some of the rationale behind that, it it really forces the contractor to schedule efficiently and engage with subcontractors that he knows can meet his schedule. We we expect that on a normal project, but I mean, it just it just really for forces them to to pay a little closer attention to that. Probably the most important one is we're hoping that this will lessen impact to the residents in the area. As you're aware, in a project like this, when the when the work is going on in that stage, those folks don't have access to their driveways. So anything we can do to lessen that impact is certainly foremost in our mind. Another one is it just um, allow staff to proceed in twenty twenty-five with a fresh slate. You know, it's if we're finishing up in twenty twenty-five, there's always new things to do, and that's just to train on our resources as well. So we're hopeful uh, that we can proceed in that way. There is, this is not a guarantee that will be done in twenty twenty-four, but we're just taking some additional steps to try to make that happen. Um, we're just looking for some guidance from you tonight on that. Um, it doesn't change our plans. We're ready to go with those. This is just instructions to bidders. Um, and the action would be just setting the public hearing. We'll be taking bids on this one on February first and awarding on February eighth. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim. Yeah, Eric.
Jim, I like the the carrot stick approach with this. I think that the incentives are are key to really keep these guys moving along with the disincentives too. And I like that out of the box approach. I mean, we need to keep these projects going. I know sometimes they're uh, uh, the contractors' priorities aren't aren't quite what the cities are. So I I like the way that we've taken a look at this.
I agree.
Oh, then we need a resolution setting.
Move the resolution to the public hearing uh, for two eight twenty-four at six P M on the Northwest Ninety-Ninth Court Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Motion, second on the resolution, further discussion. Motion second on the resolution, further discussion. And would the council please vote and would the clerk please post that vote? And that public hearing is set by vote of four to zero. Now, hundred and fourteenth.
Project will be on hundred and fourteenth street. This project will again be a full reconstruction out there and expanding the travel lanes from its current two lane configuration. So we'll be going from just north of the, of the bridge up around the corner to where that current three lane section ends. So at the end of this, there will be a center continuous two A left turn lane, similar to what's out there on the previously finished section. We are not proposing an incentive disincentive structure on this. A few reasons for that. Again, overall length of the project is working in our favor. This is about twelve hundred feet. So again, hoping that we can proceed in, in a normal fashion and keep going on that. Second one, there are a lot of private utilities out there in the right of way. We have contacted all those folks. And we're working through relocation plans with the ones that are needed there. But it's, it's just a third party that we know is not as responsive to our needs on, on specific projects. And the final factor is just, it is commercial versus residential in nature. We've engaged the three commercial properties out there and are having ongoing communications with them, but they will have access from one of their drives from at least one direction at all times during construction. And those three commercial properties are smart Hondas. Stu Hanson has a couple of properties out there and then dental eliminators. We are anticipating the project to take the majority of the construction season. We're trying to find tune some dates, probably a late start date in May. And then that extending to October or November. So just a reminder to everyone, once that starts, regardless of the stage of construction, there will not be any through access from Hickman across the creek or vice versa. I also think it'll be interesting to two different contract structures, just in the same construction season to see how those work and, and how we can work through those things with, with both our contractors. Again, the action tonight just was to set the public hearing. We'll be letting this one in late January and awarding on February first. You have to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim. Yeah.
To add that third lane, we're going to get in the right of ways with that. How is that whole thing going to work out?
We've got enough right of way out there. We'll be getting temporary construction easements from the properties out there, but there's enough right of way to accommodate that center lane.
Are we communicating or will we, is there a plan to communicate to the businesses that are a little bit further to the north around that bend? Because it's going to impact them as well.
Yeah, depending on what side you are, the message is different. But I mean, all the way to university, the, the message is going to be, hey, if you're coming here, you're going to have to come from university this year. I mean, we've had some initial discussions with Pete and are working through some of those things. But yeah, there'll be a concerted communication effort in association with this.
No, that thing Jim's going to be pool access to the aquatics center as well. I'm sure you've looked at that too. So.
Yeah, we've got some outlining signage and some interior signs for the businesses. But again, we're aware that it's going to have to be a little larger effort on this one.
Is clerk's true to cut through on this one?
I don't think so.
I think I'll say, Your Honor, too, for the count, you know, as we talked about obviously upgrading our, our street replacement and street rehabilitation programs. And you know, credit to the staff too for responding of, okay, we need to find different incentives, you know, knowing some of the experiences we've had with these reconstruction projects. How can we start changing behavior of these contractors, knowing that we are dealing with the contractor environment that we have? And so I'm very curious to see, as Jim said, the side by side of these two. I know one's commercial, one's residential. But my, our hope is, is that if we see those effective incentives like we did with Lincoln in a hundred and third in the past, hundred and fourth in the past, that that becomes maybe a standard we want to look at for those residential reconstructions because we know we have a lot more to come right after this and seeing if that's going to be an effective tool. So I know the staff's been researching this and so we're trying to respond to the council's demands and, and direction on doing things a different way and faster even on these road reconstructions. And this is a part of that is these contract structures.
Otherwise, what we're looking for is the resolution.
Resolution set the public hearing for two one twenty four, six P M for the Northwest one fourteenth street reconstruction project.
Very good. Duly noted. So we have motion a second to set the public hearing. Further discussions, seeing none with the council, please vote and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Pete, our legislative priority.
Thank you, Your Honor. The legisla- state legislative priorities memo is identical to what was discussed at our last meeting. We are looking forward to getting this approved by all of you so that we could start our engagement with our elected officials at state level and also other stakeholders who share our interest.
Again, what we need here is a resolution.
A resolution.
Motion a second, further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote and with clerk, please post that vote. And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Next item is an R E G pay request. Need a simple.
Pay request number two for R D G.
Motion a second, further discussion. Would the council please vote and will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of three affirmative and one abstention. All right, now we're going to move into a discussion of the story brewery land uses, Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So staff has had discussions with the owner of Dana Distillery, Joseph Dana, who is here tonight. And he is interested in constructing a new facility in the city of Clive. He has been in Clive since two thousand twelve. And he has seen his business continue to grow and he has desire to expand it to have more of a customer interaction component. Really kind of be a gem to add for the distillery type uses that we have in the general area, not just Clive. But currently, our zoning ordinance does not explicitly contemplate distillery or brewery uses. So how those would typically be interpreted by staff, assuming it's an operational facility where you're actually having production is going to be some level of manufacturing and warehousing. Just because that is inherently essential to having an operational facility like that. And if they're producing material, they need to have warehousing for bottling barrels, packaging, a lot of those kinds of considerations. So the site that Mr. Dana is looking at specifically is located along Northwest eighty sixth street, which is in our town center district. So we have kind of a two fold consideration here. The first is a land use question of is this a type of use we're interested in having within the community? And then understanding the inherent site layout implications of this type of use. So with the warehousing and distribution, trucking kind of impacts that you'll see with deliveries. This is going to necessitate probably at least two access points to a site. Some of those may have wider drive aisles to accommodate large vehicle movements. Mr. Dana does expect or anticipate that his deliveries would not increase from his current location, which is just down University Avenue at seventy five hundred university, which is the same shopping center as five one five brewing and Mayhem that are in there. But there is kind of a question of if this would be appropriate in the town center districts or generally throughout other commercial districts in addition to our industrial zones that we have currently. So some of that that comes into play is, of course, you would want the customer interaction front along eighty sixth street or whatever primary road would be there. But in this case specifically, that then would back up to the Green Belt Park. That the site is just north of Car X. So there is that access point that would not be necessarily having to add a driveway off of Northwest eighty sixth street. But likely a couple driveways on that existing access road that the city has. And then the rear kind of industrial-ish components of that would be closest to the park. So there's, you know, screening and different options that can be grabbed with there. But there are some of those larger considerations that are code currently hasn't considered along with the distillery uses. We do, of course, have the design standards for the town center districts in the eighty sixth street corridor. But just recognizing that some of the inherent requirements of that type of use may not be exactly compatible with some of the desire for more pedestrian connectivity, integration with the parks. So trying to get some, some feedback on whether or not this is a conversation that council's interested in continuing. Obviously, Mr. Dana is a little concerned about proceeding with a purchase agreement on property and development of detailed plans. It would be able to answer a lot of the questions while we still have the fundamental land use question of if it would even be allowed through the zoning. So there are some intriguing opportunities, but there are still a lot of questions that would have to be wrestled with through that process. And I believe Mr. Dana would have a few things he may like to say about his business and his desire to expand in the community, kind of what his long term vision is. But there are certainly some, some more complex considerations as well that we would have to work through if this was a conversation council was interested in proceeding with.
Before you step away, are there questions for Amanda? She does. How big is the lot, you know, of him?
Oh, gosh. Yes, one point nine six acres.
Right now, it is just a dirt patch. Hello, my name is Joseph Dana. Right now, this is a dirt patch. The creek is over here. And then we have what we submitted to the city for the pre-op meeting, something like this. Of course, this isn't final by any means. This is something that for the, to get into the pre-op meeting to talk to Amanda and all the associates with the city of Clive. We put this together just to give an idea of what we could do with it. So this is a little bit over eighteen thousand square foot building. We have the retention pond that is all the rave with cities now and
This city.
Yeah, a little bit about, about me. The last time I was here, I hear guys is city council meeting was about eleven and a half years ago. When you guys approved my first liquor license or the distillery permit to then allow the state to issue my license. So I appreciate that. I started out very small and I never had the real capacity to have retail sales in my facility or mainly just production, if you will. So we sell our goods through the state Iowa because the state Iowa has a controlled liquor state. And then it's distributed all throughout Iowa and we sell into multiple other states also. What I'm looking to do is to basically turn this dirt lot that's actually in a flood plain also here where the dirt lot here where we only have to, this is the most appropriate spot for our building because we have to hit the five hundred year level. So that's why the building's positioned to where it is. But what I'm looking to do is not only increase my short term storage because to be able to fill bottles, I need bottles and bottle caps. And it's just, it's just what happens when we need to produce our products. So I need to increase that. And also one element that I've always wanted to, to add is the ability for retail sales. And having the green belt right there, I see, obviously not in this particular design, but I see outdoor spaces inviting the public in, you know, being a real draw for the community. Not just Clive, but you know, like the main surrounding area. There's not, you know, there's several breweries in the, the region, in the metro area, but there's not really distilleries per se because we're kind of few and far between. But I wanted to offer some of the great products that we have to the public and not just people, you know, tell people to go to Hy-Vee and buy our stuff or whatever. I wanted to make it a destination for the city. And the city of Clive's always, and I'm not trying to kiss butt here, but the city of Clive's always been super nice to me. And so they, you guys, not you personally, but the people that I deal with on the, on the workings and the other side of the city have always been really nice, been very accommodating. And I really do like the city of Clive. I've driven by this piece of property for the last twelve years. And, you know, it's probably been a dirt lot for fifteen or twenty years and I thought that I could do something with it. Now, I know that this is in the town center district. And one of the things that Amanda informed me is, is that you guys wanted to see people come in and out. And I think this is an excellent fit because at our current facility, when you come in, we're so small. We have no retail sales. We can't have a tasting room because we like physically do not have the space. And having everything under one roof, because right now we have to store, I know I'm jumping around from one thing to another, but we have to store our, our dry goods and stuff offsite. So we spend at least sixteen to twenty hours a week just shuttling stuff back and forth. And with this, it would cut down on that time where we could have employees man the front, like retail sales, maybe a cocktail room. I don't know. I have really high hopes for something like this. In our current license with Iowa A B D already allows us to have a cocktail room. Allows us retail sales. It allows us all this other stuff. So there's no additional license that I need from, from my standpoint. It's just that I want to bring my distillery to a level that's, that is something to really talk about. So what I was asking, what I'd like to ask from you guys is like to approve to allow Amanda and their team to let me move forward because like she mentioned, I do have signed purchase agreements for this ground. And I'm kind of at the, the, basically you guys hold my future in your hands is what it boils down to.
Quick question. Mr. Dana, are you familiar with the Foundry and?
Yeah, I am. Yeah, yeah.
Analogous to that? Would this be analogous to that?
Actually, I think that we would blow the Foundry out of the water. I actually built, if you have ever been to the Foundry. I actually built and designed the continuous distillation system and also the pot still and the spirit safe and all, all their distillation systems. So as like a side hobby, that's what we do.
Your kind of aesthetics viewpoint, would you consider what you're planning on building at this location similar to?
Yes, yes. It's going to be a show distillery. We, we still have to function and, you know, have a bottling room and mixing and blending and that sort of thing. But with this facility, most of it's going to be like two story, not, not two story. The, the building's going to be, I would like to see it be thirty, thirty five feet tall, two levels in there. You know, if I want a show distillery, what, what we would call in the industry, there's, there's people that operate out of like, let's say a Morton building or a metal shed basically, you know, and it's just straight manufacturing. And that's so the, the place doesn't have to look fancy or nothing at all. And then there's places like the Foundry where for them, they're using a building that's like a hundred and twenty years old to begin with. So there's general natural aesthetics that come from the building of that design. But that's, that's what I want to bring. I want to bring, it, it looks beautiful on the outside. It's beautiful on the inside. It's functional. It's a, a place that is inviting to people.
The green belt too, like you said.
Yeah. And I mean, like you, you have like tons of bicyclists during the summertime. I want them to come up, have a bucket lemonades or whatever and just be safe, you know, moderation.
So Amanda, I mean, the Foundry isn't in a residential area. I don't know what it's zoned there. I mean, could this not be similar to something like that?
It could be, yes. But that does have, you're right, where it's not in like the residential area. It's not overly accessible for pedestrians. Tried, but of course there's the railroad track there. Yeah, there is the trailer runs behind, but from the nearby residential and the Valley Junction neighborhood, it's not really walkable to go to it. It's tricky with having to cross railroad and the railroad tracks. um, it's not really walkable to go to it. Um, it's tricky with having to cross railroad and the railroad tracks in addition. Um, and some of the pedestrian connectivity they have.
Peachtree Brewing and Grove and we have a lot of those in the metro. To me, this again would be pretty analogous to those types of situations, but is it not?
Yes, it definitely could be. Um, and we've had conversations, staff with Mr. Danner on uh the aesthetic expectations of the eighty-sixth street neighborhood, looking at ways that there could be maybe an outdoor patio component integrated. Some considerations on how you might orient the traffic flows through the site to not have to have another entrance or curb cut onto eighty-sixth street. Um, because that is one of the limitations and some of the standards would be whether or not that access point would be allowed. But there certainly, uh it could be similar to like the peace trees or foundry type setup. Um, but those do still have, you know, the a lot, well, not so much Peachtree downtown, but the Foundry has, you know, bigger drive aisles, quite a bit of parking around it, um some of those items that.
Perfect analogy, but it seems like it's doable, at least from my uneducated worldview. I mean, to me, I love this idea. I think it, I think it'd be a fantastic addition personally, so.
Yeah, I I I like it too. And you know, we've talked quite a bit and we've talked about economic development on uh in in the eighty-sixth street. And I think this goes hand in hand with what what we're doing right there. Look, these two dirt lots have been there for as as long as I can remember. You know, this seems like a a good project that incorporates both community and aesthetics and 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 also, you know, you're providing employment. You've got more access. We've talked about putting things on the trail for attractions as well and business on the trail. And I think this uh kind of falls in line with that that uh that plan right there. Tell me a little bit more about your business, your company. What products do you produce? And a little bit more background there.
Um, so like I said, I started in a two thousand twelve, about August of two thousand twelve. And uh started out small and uh and like uh you get me a loan, I'll tuck your ear off for hours and hours. So I'll try and keep it short. Yeah, 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 right. So so uh um I have, and I'm not trying to break my arm off patting myself on the back. So uh I have amassed a a knowledge of distilling. So I do consulting for distilleries all over the United States. I've been as far as Vietnam and in Japan, um traveling to other distilleries to set them up. We also design and build distillation systems. Um, the la- last one we built was for a big ass, big, sorry, a big distillery in Kentucky. Um, and as far as our products go, we do a wide range of products. We have our own uh line of products that are sold in in Iowa and all the surrounding states like Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Tennessee, Georgia, Texas. Um, those are, uh, those are uh gotcha spirits. Um, you can find those at your local Hy-Vee store. Um, and then we also do or the liquor store of your choice. Um, so.
Is it whiskey?
Yeah, so it's, it's the whole gambit. So we do uh vodka, gin, whiskey, uh blended whiskey, rum, bourbon. Uh, we do all kinds of flavor decors. Um, we do a a lot of all different kinds of spirits from one end to the other. From like you said, vodka to cream alcohol, um low proof to high proof. Um, we just, and we also do uh contract bottling. So um, for example, we're working with Toplink Goliath. We just produced uh Toplink Goliath uh uh straight Kentucky bourbon for them. Um, so it's like a white label or private label, whatever you'd like to call it. Um, we do that for companies all over the United States, some big, some small, that sort of thing. Um, and like what Amanda said, the uh truck traffic is not going to increase. It'll stay the same. Sometimes we have i- in our little spot in the strip mall, sometimes we have uh four semis a a week, and sometimes we don't have any semis for like two or three weeks. So, you know, averages out. But um um we do, like I said, we do our own line of spirits and then we do contract bottling for people all over the United States.
Other, other questions?
I just have a comment. I have been in your facility several years, and it's really a credit to you that you've grown it to the extent that you have. And it's a really fantastic opportunity for us to retain a business that's done so well right in our city. So thanks for giving us that chance.
Thank you very much.
And I know to you, I've been in there as well. You've given me a tour that long ago where you probably started up uh shortly after. I I I support it. Um, I I think we should continue the discussion. Uh, some simple things. I know you did a simple drawing here, you know, some configuration. Uh, and and it fits nicely on there. I think to to really sell it would be that access uh not to semi trucks but to a patio, right? You've mentioned that. Something on back, on the backside, drawing those bicycles. And for one, I just think it would blow up. I mean, people come because of it, right? I mean, I think it's a must for you as a business model.
A bunch of friends that'll be there opening night.
Yeah, we were, we were just announced every uh uh brewery and distiller on a bike trail.
Right, and.
Just add it to you.
Yeah, and it's, we were torn between uh putting like the front showroom towards eighty-six. And you know, like, what do you look at? You look at a giant tank farm? Or do you put it on the backside and, but we need truck access.
Staff can help you with.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, of course.
Head of the game, and so they can give you some of those ideas that you don't have to keep changing and just work with them. And they'll probably get you there a lot faster than your, you know, your your designers or your uh
Yeah.
The folks that are going to do this for you. I I'm fully supportive. I think you've run a great business uh since um since I toured your place and it was small. I just remembered when you gave me a tour is that first stuff that comes off there that's like bam. You know, you can start a lawnmower with it. It just amazed me. I didn't drink that stuff. It was going to kill me. The first little drops coming out. So it's somewhere between, you know, like you were saying, those distillers are the fancy, really big ones in the in the uh warehouse type style. And then I I still enjoy the Discovery Channel with the bootleggers. So that's a, you know, a a draw to me as well, but.
Learning a lot.
Bootleg right there in the woods.
Oh, man, is that an direction for you?
Yes, I think so. We'll continue our conversations, work through some of the uh kind of layout considerations. And then alongside that, uh figure out exactly what kind of code changes may be necessary if we're able to come up with a a layout that we think addresses the primary concerns and still would accommodate the use.
Thank you for looking at Clive and looking at that property.
Yeah, it'd be great to get that developed.
Yeah.
That property has some unique challenges, obviously, with the floodplain and then that sanitary sewer.
Yeah, and this one here, I don't know if you can still show it. But um right here, it's almost, can't even see it, but it says eight hundred and forty feet. So for that section, we only have to raise that up about two feet of dirt. Sorry, I put all my stuff in the way. But basically for this section, it has the circle here. That's like eight hundred and forty feet. So we just have to raise that that section up two feet to be out of the five hundred year floodplain.
Yeah, it'd be looking around um two to three feet. We'd have to get engineering confirmation on the levels there um to get above that base flood elevation. I think it was eight forty-one point five was our staff estimate um from the firm's study, so.
But that big billboard right there, right in the middle of everything, will that, would that come down? Would that stay there? There's something unique about that. Did it expire? Or there's some poison pill on that or something. What's the background on that?
Yeah, so I might have to pull Doug up um to confirm because I know that predates me. Um, my understanding is the kind of poison pill was if the city acquired it. So it could, thank you. Yep. Um, so our.
An amphitheater there.
Yeah, yeah. So with the site redevelopment, that would um have to go away. It wouldn't be, uh, it's a non-conforming uh sign with our ordinance today. We no longer allow the billboards and pole signs. Um, so that is something that would go away with the redevelopment of the site.
Better, yeah.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Pete, community engagement.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this computer's having a little bit of trouble at the moment. And so we've been trying to get my presentation off of it and onto this flash drive. If it's all right, I can present from this seat. Or if I could have just a moment, I'm gonna could work with uh Matthew and Matt to grab it so I could stand at the podium. I'm happy to do whatever is supposed, Your Honor, most.
Your computer's disengaged, Pete. That's a.
Is disengaged. Matt's got.
Just tell me when you want me to look forward.
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of my favorite presentations to make every year. This is a real testament to many of my colleagues uh putting in a lot of time to tell excellent stories about why families and businesses succeed in Clive, why they are thriving in Clive. Every year, we want to make sure we're continuously improving the way that we tell these stories and advance the city council's priorities. This is your plan for how we will get that done to advance the priorities you set in August. Next slide, please. I always come back to this because this is residents telling us directly, what are the things about Clive that are most important to them? What do they value the high, the most? So on that axis, at the bottom, you see the level of importance. And on the other side, you see how they rate our quality. This is what we want that chart to look like, where we have a lot of high importance items clustered in that high value quadrant. Notice the ones that are at the top because we're going to come back to them throughout this plan. Public safety, parks and recreation. No worries. Natural environment and utilities. Next slide. You also hear this frequently from Matt and from me and from everybody on staff that all the things that we would like to do to advance these facets of livability can be done, but they are done so much better and with so much less heartache if we sustain the trust of our residents. We want to try and do something new. We're taking out, we're making a withdrawal sort of on our bank account, the trust bank account that residents have in their city. Here are some of the uh rankings from the, again, the twenty-two survey showing how, where that trust is at when it comes to the way that we engage with them or see our customer service ranking. You see how people respect our public information services. And then very basic ones about how we treat people fairly and with respect. We want all of our communications and engagement strategies to advance these values as well, reinforce them so that when we survey again, which we'll be doing this spring, we have similar results. Next slide, please. That said, we have some headwinds that we need to be aware of. I've brought this point up before, but I I do think our data backs it up. Nationally, we are starting to see a continuing trend of less and less trust in public institutions. Most of those uh sort of hits have been landing at the federal and at the state level. You'll see that on another slide. But I do think that we start, have started to see potentially some of that affecting the way people think about their municipal government. Fortunately, despite that rapid decrease in trust at other levels of government and other public institutions, we're still showing quite a bit of resilience. And that's true of municipalities across the country in general. The next slide will show you that. Next slide, please. So this is from earlier this fall. Gallup has for many, many years been doing an annual survey of trusted government institutions. At the hot top there, you see local government, where we are still at sixty-seven percent with all of our peer institutions. But then you can see what I would argue is a pretty calamitous drop for a lot of other institutions. Congress has never had a great benchmark uh record, but it has really nosedived. Others like uh in general, how do people feel about elected officials, general, regardless of where they serve? That's been taken a hit. The Supreme Court, that's been taking a hit. This is just about levels of government, but we can point to a lot of other aspects of public life where people have a growing negative perception and less trust in these institutions. Next slide, please. This one shows you what the difference has been from the historic average. And even there, you can see local governments have had a bit of a slide. So this is all, I brought for this is background, that those headwinds are out there. But my plan, and certainly I I'm very optimistic that we're going to achieve this. I expect that we are going to continue to be able to buck those winds and that we're going to continue to preserve a high degree of trust with our residents. And I promise you, we will need that because the ambition that we are going to have this year to build in Clive, not just now, but for the rest of this decade, whether we're talking about streets, parks, improvements to the green belt. This is going to be an a decade of growth and building in Clive, and we're going to need the residents of businesses to come along with us. Storytelling is going to be a key part of that. Next slide, please. This is a slide I provide each year when we have this discussion. It shows you that continuum of engagement where on the far side of inform, we are just asking folks to receive information, process that information, potentially ask some questions, but they're not participating in the decision-making process directly. That's left to all of you. As you move through the engagement spectrum all the way to empower, there you have decisions being made directly by residents where they are set, where you as a council would give them the ability to not just inform the way you all think about it, but more directly say, yep, we're going to take a vote and this will be the name of the park. Or this is going to be the type of play feature that we want to have is a a playground, was an example. The further you go toward empower, the bigger the lift is. But also, the further in ways you, at times you go with empower, I think the quality of the touch improves as well. Because there are real stakes and you're able to get a response from folks where they're bringing, they're hopefully their good intentions, their energy, their attention as well. It lends to lends itself to a, I think, a more lasting uh impression on folks and hopefully a positive one of that. Next slide, please. So here are your strategic priorities that have a big community engagement or communications component to them. I'm going to break these out into the following slides into some clusters of of types of stories. But none of these on here should be a surprise. They are straight from the high and top priorities for policy and for management that we established in August. Next slide, please. So here's one of the first, and I think probably the most important category of stories that we need to tell well this year, the street stories. We'll have the reconstructions with ninety-ninth and a hundred and fourteenth. But I think this is a year when we want to broaden our timeline and think more about what this entire next decade's going to be. That interchange project is a whale. That is an absolute big fish. And we, if we're going to land it, we are going to need to make sure that we are prepared to show folks that there is a plan and not just a set of years in front of us with infinite construction. We know how that sort of feeling of I'm always driving through the detours. It doesn't look like they're making any progress. It's getting dirty and bumping into things. That's a real source of frustration for folks. The fact that it's going to be on Hickman too, busiest corridor in the entire city uh only ups the ante. There is the quality of our storytelling. And so we're going to want to make sure that we build a site and put other resources in place to show people that, yes, there is going to be disruption, but there is a plan. And when we get to the end of it, it's going to be a good, a good thing. Safer crossing for everybody, easier for pedestrians and cyclists to get through the intersection, easier for people from the Greenbelt Trail to get up into those amenities in Urbandale and for folks in Urbandale to get down into the Greenbelt as well. There's a lot of amenities we're going to be able to talk about in a, on a very positive way, but we need to start laying those out for folks from the start. What I'm envisioning for this street story, and the interchange would be part of this, is going to be a map-focused landing spot. Um, we already have paid for it and have access to these these pages called Story Maps. They're powered by Esri, which is where we uh the our partner with our GIS data. Consuming that GIS data with our maps, we can create sites then similar to what we created for the public education site on Stormwater. That's the one that we uh built that has my sons on its front, uh fishing there in Walnut Creek. This would be a similar type of site where on a map, folks would be able to zoom in on a particular type of project and see, oh, these are the key updates I need to know about for the interchange project. Or these are the things I need to know about what's going on with Alice's Road or Ninety-Ninth Court or a hundred and fourteenth. As we keep adding projects over the years, we can keep adding to that site. So that's my concept right now for how we would sort of create a central place for our street storytelling, not the only place. It would also be a place where we can incorporate video, plenty of pictures, and then project updates in ways for folks to sign up for email distribution lists if they have a a particular stake in a given project.
How are we advertising this site and getting that out so people know to go to it?
Right. So it all starts with cityofclive.com. That would be the place that I would always want to immediately send folks. But the QR code offers so many easy ways for us to just have people get a phone out, take a snap and immediately go to that spot. The nice thing about these Story Maps too is that they are mobile optimized. So no matter what type of screen you're looking at, a small one like this or an iPad, whatever it might be, you're going to have a good experience. You're going to be able to use your thumbs and your fingers to swipe and zoom. Uh, they're very, very responsive to all the different types of touch devices we have. Other questions about the street stories? One of the other big headlines is going to be just the numbers. The amount of money that we're spending that you have now given us direction on to with the approval of the CIP. That's a great story in itself, and one that I think is worthy of a good earned media push. With the street stories and some of these others I'm about to outline, the first quarter of twenty twenty-four is extremely important. It won't be the only climate that we're telling the story, but it's important because it's when we're getting into the construction season. It's when we're going to be doing some of the neighborhood meetings. It's also when we're going to be doing sort of the state of the city discussion and having quite a bit of touch with our state officials. We want them to see that Clive continues to be, even with the changes that they've made, Clive is adjusting the way they ask it to, ask us to, but then also continuing to build and create a space where people want to come and live and be economically successful. Start a family, buy a house, do all those other things that the state does signal that they want to see. Start a family, buy a house, do all those other things that the state does signal that they want to see happening as well. So we want to make sure those opinion leaders and those other elected officials are hearing the right thing about Clive. Next slide, please. CIP and budget. This is one where sort of my spider sense here is tingling because in this spring, for the first time, there will be a mailing that goes out in early April to all tax property owners, outlining specifically for their unique property, what the taking is that the various levels of government are proposing, how that differs from the previous year, and if there is an increase, what do they intend to spend those dollars on? We've seen a draft version of this from the state of Iowa and it's an ugly piece of mail. Not because it's not accurate, it's accurate, but it's just too much just, I think, to try and fit into a single thing. And yet that's what we're going to do. There's no changing that. Those are the cards that are dealt. So we need to be prepared to dealt by the state.
Legislate.
So we will have, it looks like very limited space. So think of it as sort of as tiles where every taxing entity, property taxing entity will have a certain amount of space. I'm not sure if we're going to be limited by sentences or word count or even characters, but it's not going to be very much space for us to tell what is always a very complex story. So we've got to build other assets where we are telling people to go to get the full story on this. And that's going to be video, that's going to be graphics, that's going to be a lot of the types of information we present when we do the annual budget approval process, those meetings this year will be in February. So as we go through that process and you all give us final direction, we're going to have to be very quick to respond with all of our assets in place. And it's going to take all of our communications platforms. Historically, this is one that's tough to get people to pay attention to. But I think that mailing could potentially pivot, shift that. And I think people just interested in how the state's property tax legislation is going to be affecting cities. I think that's going to create quite a bit of earned media attention this year on budgets as well. We want to be prepared. Next slide, please. This is the other one where I think we need to build sort of that story map place where it's going to be evergreen. The investments that you all are, are making in the green belt and adjacent to the green belt are hugely impressive and are going to further cement the green belt as the core of Clive's brand and identity. So as we make those changes and as we ask people to be patient with us as we tear up pieces of the trail when the WRA goes through with their parallels trunks or while we're still working out at Little Walnut Creek, we've got to show them that there's a path, that at the end of this, there's going to be a little, to get there a little pain. But at the end of this, there's going to be a beautiful space that's going to be a great amenity. So similar logic we have with the streets, we want to make sure that we're doing that with green belt. It's not just a story about the trail though and capital improvements. It's that day-to-day stuff that we want people to think about as too. It's the work we do with adopted trail or dropped stream segments. It's the good trail etiquette and of course it's the goats. I would say with the coyotes, the other wildlife too. I've been working with Richard to figure out a clever acronym for our coyote education, maybe like the, let's say annual coyote education management or something like that, ACME or management and education. See? It's in the beginning and everybody's on their last.
They didn't catch the joke.
We all got it.
So long as nothing blows up out there, I'm fine with that.
Wiley, right?
There you go. There you go. There you go. We are waiting at this, the WRA sewer project, I think is going to be a really big one here along with 8035. We think that the trail will be open throughout the 8035 construction, which is great, but it will require some steps to make sure everybody stays safe going through there when the bridges are being worked on especially. The WRA project though, in the ongoing work at Alice, to extend out at Little Walnut Creek, that is points could just flat out, you're not going to be able to get on those parts of the trail and there's going to be detours that go up into the neighborhoods. We want to make sure we get the detour information out and let people know how long we expect those closures to be in place. That will be with us for many, many years, at least the rest of this decade. Next slide, please. 86 Street Activation. This year, there's part of the best priority that involves that person-to-person and key stakeholders. Matt is leading a lot of that and bringing along staff as he needs us. But there's also the opportunity to do a lot of activation around the Lanan Park improvements. That's a picture from a couple of years ago when we had students from Crestview actually do a surveying project among their peer students and their families about what might go into Lanan Park. I think this year we've got another opportunity to further engage those students. One thing that you should all be aware of as we go into that part of the storytelling, most of the kiddos don't think of this as Lanan Park. It's Red Park. And the reason they call it Red Park is because the playground equipment there is red. And so what I, Mayor and I were actually just at Indian Hills Junior High, making a presentation, talking about Lanan Park. And I kind of had to, I was looking across the room and not seeing everybody like light up like, oh, I know where that's at. But when I told them, we're talking about Red Park, everybody said, oh, yeah, I know where Red Park is at. So it's a loved space. It's an absolutely used place and as people, we can harness that love and affection they have for the space, I think, to help them engage with the project and help us create something fantastic. Similar with the flood prone property buyout area, there's an opportunity there for the temporary park reuse for there to be quite a bit of engagement there. And once we do come up with that, with that reuse is going to be and have some of those assets in place, we're going to want people to know they're there so they go and use the spot. Next slide, please. Here's a list of a number of other topics. It's going to be a busy year of storytelling. Employee, employee recruiting retention, especially with the chief retiring and finding a new police chief. We're going to need to make sure we're putting our best foot forward for candidates so they look at Clive and think this is a great opportunity. That recruiting is not just about creating a site though, where you have people say, wow, I love being a cop in Clive because I've got great pay and benefits. That's a part of it. But I'm envisioning also here is something that more opens up the, the opportunity to talk about the types of ways that our officers, both fire and EMS and PD are serving. Could be community education stuff. One that I'm really excited about getting behind is our young family education. It's a class that the fire department puts on a little things like how you get your car seat done right. How you can also, if you have a choking hazard in your house, how you can eliminate those, or if somebody is choking, how you work with an infant. That's not only a good story because it's good public information, but it's also a great story because it shows the character of our officers and the fact that they do care. We want to project that family orientation of our team. We want to project their sincere care and their commitment to community policing as well, because those are the kinds of candidates we want to attract. So this won't just be about come join the team. That'll be a piece of it. It'll also be about how they do their jobs on a day-to-day basis and how they are serving the community. Signaling to those great candidates, hey, this is a place that I want to come and work. The 2024 resident survey, that's a hallmark for us as we make difficult decisions and prioritize among many, many good opportunities. That'll be in this field in the spring with results for all of you to discuss in July so that you can use it for your decision-making in August. Parks investments beyond what we have with Green Belt Landing and the Green Belt. You've got the Indian Hills Woods Trail, Stonegate Park Playground, Sorkcina Park Dedication, that's coming this year. Lead service line identification, that's thank you from the EPA. These are mandating that we go through and identify if we have any galvanized or lead or other not good service line materials. We don't think that we have any, or if we have some, it's very, very little. And but still to comply with the mandate, we need to get out there and work and to find, to get confirmation. So this is going to be a lot of direct mail and email. We know it's going to be properties that are pre-1999 construction. So it's not all of the city. At this point, we have less than 200 of the roughly 4,000 properties that we need to confirm. We have to have our work done by October. Jeff, did I get our numbers right on that? We have to have our work done by October and submitted to the state. So this will be a steady drumbeat. We've already been banging that drum for multiple months. We'll have to continue that all the way through this year. We don't want to be in a situation where we have a huge number that we have to go out and confirm ourselves and do a lot of handholding. I think we've built a process that makes it pretty easy for folks to identify whether they have it and submit information. We're pushing a tool right now that is very much phone friendly. Using again, a QR code and filling out a quick little five-minute survey to get it done. We're just going to have to stay on it so people know it's coming. Expect letters going out to these property owners, January, and then probably follow up in February and March. Stormwater rate changes this year, it's just changing up the ERU calculation. So that's mostly going to be talking to commercial and industrial properties. So it's much smaller audience than what we had last year. More water storytelling as we do every year. We'll have our flooding and community safety related communications that really has a spike as we get into weather aware weeks in the spring. I said the special census nod there, that's actually a little early. The special census lift is going to be in 2025, not in 2024. So it's just on mostly on the administrative side right now, preparing for that. But we won't have to worry about it so much for the next 12 months. And then I want to absolutely compliment the library aquatics recreation teams. That is the biggest amount of, they are the biggest content creators in the city. Now, we're, nobody else is even close. We'll have days when a big story comes out, but they are consistently month over month over month, talking about opportunities to come and take advantage of a program at the library, do something new with the rec department. Going back to what you saw the first slide with that chart as well, all that communication about natural spaces in the green belt, they're doing a ton of that work as well. Whether it's adopted trail or stream or cleanup opportunity or come out to food truck Friday, get down to Campbell, all these things that bring people into those natural spaces, the green belt, trail etiquette. They do a wonderful, wonderful job. But this, the, the, the charge that was came from the council to staff was to say, you're doing a good job, but it's now time to go bigger. Crank up the volume, crank up the quality as well. And so that's what we're going to do. Next slide, please. This leads, I'm actually mad, I'm going to have to go back forward one more and then we're going to come back to this one. That gets to why we hired the communication specialist. This is about cranking up the volume and cranking up the quality. It's this almost identical slide to what I provided last year when we were first considering this hire. We hit the pause button because we didn't want to get in a jam because of what might be coming from the state legislature. We've proven that we've got the resources to, to bring this person on board and that they're going to deliver great value, especially if they can continue to really complement the way that we grind and go after grant dollars or pay for themselves, which is something that I'm working very hard on this year too. These aren't all the responsibilities. But what I want you all to look at, see as you, as you look at this list is that this person is a day-to-day doer. If the measuring stick is, are we getting more quality content out the door? We need a doer to get that done. We need the person who is hitting the, sounding the right notes with all of these, these points above and, and many others that aren't on this, on the page. The great thing about Molly and her experience, you know that she's got the digital. She did a ton of that with her work with the state of Iowa, even launching a podcast with the Iowa Department of, of not economic development, but workforce development. She also has got all the other sort of skills that you need. She's a great writer. She's a very, very disciplined project manager, which is something that I was looking for especially to come and complement some of my skills and also some of the places where I'm not as strong. She, I think, is, is going to also help other departments expand the way that they're doing their storytelling. She, when she was with workforce development, she was responsible for training a number of other people throughout the state and their regional satellite offices, teaching them how to take a great picture, teaching them how to write a great social media post, teaching them how to do some other simple video production. She's going to be able to use that teacher skillset to keep building up skills that are in all the other departments because we're going to still be a dispersed, use dispersed model for our storytelling. We don't want to create points in the editorial process where things always have to come through me or through Molly and then get jammed up there and then suddenly we're not timely. Or we lose accuracy or we're just relevance in the, in the course of storytelling. So we still want to have all of those teammates out there pushing great content, the library, the parks, you name it. We just want to have now a person who comes alongside them to help them do that even better. That takes us back one slide then. Because I want to talk also about some other ways that we're going to pump up the volume for Clive in the years to come. We have some very interesting decisions to make about our digital platforms. One in particular that's already been given the green light by all of you is introducing a mass notification system. The actual, the final shape of what that should be, still open. It could be something that really just is more like one-way text or one, two good time to get emails or voice text as well. But it wouldn't be something where somebody could necessarily respond on the spot and say, oh, tell me more about that. And then maybe get a chat bot to respond or get another person. The best that we could do in that initial scenario would be saying, call us or email us and we'll continue the conversation. There are other tools out there we could get into that do give a person more of that sense of real time back and forth, two-way communication. We're evaluating those as options too. Then there's an even bigger approach that we could go, which might be something like a City of Clive app. My preference initially, and we haven't decided on this and ultimately before we do, we need to come back to all of you. My preference initially is to go with something that gets us into the space before necessarily committing to a big lift like an app. And the reason for that is that I think it's going to be easier to build an audience. Whatever we go with, the success depends on how big an audience of people opting in we create. I think getting people to opt in for a text service of when they know it's just going to be simple, short, timely information, street closure, water main issue, snow ordinance effect, things like that. I think that's going to be a better hook to sign people up than asking them to do a bigger signup or sort of downloading an app. That also is something that's going to be easier for us to manage for the beginning as opposed to a bigger lift around keeping an app fresh and updated and working well for everybody and troubleshooting it if something comes up. The next point then in our process, in our decision-making process is going to be with agenda management. So your agenda management with Novus is going away. It'll be end of life in October. So even it's still in this budget year, we need to make a decision about its replacement. What does that have to do with community engagement? Many of the platforms we're looking at have a way to incorporate your video capture and then bookmark it with your agenda. Right now, we don't have anything that allows us to do that mashup between video or audio with the actual agenda. These solutions would offer an alternative. I don't think we want to go away from also using our YouTube channel. We've built up good equity there and people are used to going to that site. We also want them to go there to see a lot of other videos we're creating. But an agenda management tool potentially could come in and further compliment that online experience people are having both before the meetings, but also after the meetings if they've been quartered and they maybe want to go back and look at that information. Next point that'll be in front of us will be how do we want to improve the newsletter experience in Clive? Email feels old school in many ways, but I love it because it's a way for us to really cultivate a specific audience and communicate directly with them without having to fight through all the clutter of a social media algorithm. If people are interested in what, and they opt and take the time to opt in, I think we can get and sustain great engagement and build up that trust with them through these tools. The newsletter that needs the most attention right now is going to be the utility newsletter. It's electronically delivered to many of you still now as a black and white PDF. And that doesn't give people such an easy time to engage with it on their phones. It's difficult to click and get them off to that PDF out into other places where we'd like them to go to get more information. The solution is something we need to sort out. Whatever we pick though, I would like to keep building some consistency across the departments so that we've got people who are able to teach each other the best practices. And in one common spot, we can go look for our analytics, click-through rates, testing, A B testing. So we figure out how many stories kind of catch people's attention. When do they decide to click through? When do they decide to not click at all? I think if we have one platform like a constant contact or something like it, where we can kind of can build up that data set, it's going to make it easier for us to make data-driven decisions about how we best do email in the future. The one that comes right after that will be the website. So we just today approved a two-year hosting agreement with Revise, our current website builder and host. They are very, very cost effective. There are others that are out there that are likewise cost effective, maybe a little bit more, but are companies that bring together multiple different tools. One that I will mention is Civic Plus. They have an agenda management system, they have a website solution, they have a parks and rec signup solution, which is something all of you have asked us to research as well. We've been through this unpleasant process too many times where we're with a standalone vendor who does one thing and they end it. And then we're stuck, having forced to go do something else. Or they get bought out by somebody else. We want to pressure test this idea that if we start to get it together with one of these larger companies that provides multiple solutions, will we find ourselves less often in that bad spot where we get, get something forced on us that we don't want to do? A website pivot is a big, big decision. So that's why we, it was important to sign up for two years of hosting. We'll go into this next year as part of that extension for two years. They are willing to make free of charge some improvements to our existing site. But I anticipate when we get to this time next year, that we'll want to make a decision about whether or not we want to stay. And if we don't, what we want to move to and then make that decision because transitioning to a new site, a new host and the new architecture, new site is a 12-month process. So that means that by the time we get to our end of our 2026, to the conclusion of this two-year hosting agreement in 2026, we're ready to go with potentially a new site, or if we're staying with revised, launching something new with them. There are other choices that come quickly after this. There are other choices that come quickly after this too, to be aware of, but I thought for today, let's just talk about 2026 and 2027. We'll cross that bridge when we get there. Next slide, Matt. And one, I'd click it twice if you would. So this is one that I like to finish up with. It's very similar to some of the things we've been working on and improving for many years. You see the host of tools, some that you're really familiar with, with email and the website, surveying tools, social media, working with our earned media partners and starting increasingly to get out there with other, excuse me, working with other opinion leaders who can help us tell our stories. That I would be happy to take questions.
Questions for Pete.
The robust presentation, Pete, with a lot of moving pieces in here and it's, you know, it's a big left. So I appreciate you giving us a good blueprint on this and a good outline.
Thank you, sir.
A lot of good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, honor.
Next time we have on our agenda is a closed session.
Yes, your honor, staff had requests that the council go into closed session regarding potential litigation under Iowa code, chapter 21.5, subsection 1C.
We have a motion a second to go into closed. We'll be leaving the chambers for that.
Correct.
So everyone is aware. Further discussion about with the council, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote.
Mr. Mayor, who signed his books?
All right, that passes by a vote of four to zero. So we will go into closed session and move into the conference room. Like to end our closed session. Let the record reflect that no action was taken in the closed session. We need to take a vote to come out of closed session. I could have one.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second to come out of our closed session for discussion, seeing none with counsel, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote. So that passes four to zero. And again, just confirm, let the record reflect that no action was taken during that closed session. Next, we have an action item, possible consideration of the settlement agreement. Full move to approve the settlement agreement.
Second.
Motion second approve a settlement agreement for discussion, seeing none with counsel, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote. And that was passed by a vote of four to zero. Thank you all very much. Next, we have reports and we'll start down on your end, Pete.
Thank you, honors. For everybody's awareness, for scheduling in January and February, it's very likely there will be a number of neighborhood meetings that are tied to specific capital projects. 99th is one of them. We've already had our first. There will be others, though, in advance of the construction starting that'll get very detailed about trash, the phasing that you saw tonight. Stonegate Park with kids over there at Schuler, but also potentially others with playground replacement. Lanan could be kicking off in those first two. As we get these booked, we'll communicate dates so all of you can attend, hopefully, and enjoy and hear what your constituents have to say about these projects. There are a whole lot of people involved, so scheduling is going to get complex, but watch for those if you would. Chamber dinner coming up here, the annual dinner. Send me a note letting me know if you plan to attend. If we do have any spots that are left open, we we might be able to offer a seat to some of our friends at the Clive Chamber. But because they've gone from their traditional 10 top seats to eight, if all of us decide to go, that choose up all the spots.
Date on that.
25th because we moved that council meeting back a week to accommodate.
That's the greater than one partnership dinner or the?
Greater than one partnership.
Partnership, partnership.
And that's a Thursday, Matt?
Yeah, it's our fourth Thursday of January. That's why we moved the council meeting.
Yeah, I'm in.
I'm in. You're right. Okay, great. I'll confirm with customer McLean and and let me know customer when you have a eye on that too. Finally, I was very happy to participate earlier this week in a day long strategic planning session for West Des Moines Community Schools. Chief Scott from West Des Moines was there, a number of other community members and faculty and staff from all the buildings in the West Des Moines district. And I was extremely impressed with sort of the rigor that they bring to their process and their awareness of what a big moment this is for all kinds of school districts across Iowa as they're imagining what their future is going to look like. So they were receptive to the city of Clive's ideas. One that I made sure to articulate was our interest in finding ways that we might be able to collaborate on things we have in common. Green spaces, fields, gyms, libraries, community rooms, number of the things that you all have spoken about as we think about what Harbach Center is going to be. Also had a really good conversation with the new principal at Crestview about what some of the other things we're doing with the 86th Street neighborhood. And I was very happy to hear that they are just about done with their additions. And when that is completed, they would love to have folks from this team come and get a chance to take a look at what they've done in that space, including their new community. More to come on those opportunities. Anything else, Pete?
No, your honor. Good. Okay, I've got a couple of things tonight. I'll try to be brief. Clive Community Foundation on November 29th handed out a number of grants to various, you know, charities and and different groups. a number of grants to various, you know, charities and different groups. This year, they distributed fifty thousand dollars, which was the most they've ever done. So very impressive on their part, included groups like Big Brother, Clive Community Services, Clive Lions, and also our own Parks and Rec received a small donation of six hundred fifty dollars for the Harbach Center. And some gaming equipment because kids don't have enough video games to play apparently. MPO, the executive director search is kind of hit full steam at this point. The search committee had originally recommended to just do it in-house, keep it local. The policy committee had other opinions and so overrode the search committee. And a consultant was hired called To The Top and they'll be collaborating with Diebler and Company. All told, it'll cost about fifty thousand dollars for the consultants, going to be on a very, very aggressive timeline. The position will be posted in January. The finalists will be selected and interviewed in February. The final director will be selected in March and the expectation is the start date will be April first. So very aggressive timeline. There was, just because we always have to have a little drama at the MPO. Yeah, I know. Some, there's, there was a lot of concern amongst some policy and exec members about, and these were the exact words used of a small contingent to not bully and what was the other word? Co-op is not the right word, but basically bully the, the search committee into their preferred finalists. And so they, there was a, there was a very strong desire for transparency and openness in the process so that the policy committee would have influence on the search committee and that you couldn't have one or two bullies. Who could, who could kind of drive the train? Yeah. There were a few smirks in the room when, when, when that was brought up. So. Yeah, that's right. So February fifth will be the kind of winnowing of the finalists. So that, that meeting will be open to the policy members to see who the, who the final interviewees will be. And then the interviews themselves will also be open to the policy committee to attend if they so choose. Those interviews are scheduled for February fifteenth, which is also our policy committee meeting date. So theoretically, the decision will be made at that policy committee meeting for who the final executive director will be. An offer will be made the next day and then contract negotiation and all that stuff.
Do a search and, and a name in one month?
Internal accounts.
Very aggressive. We have Dylan Mullinex as the internal candidate interim director. And I think he has a very good chance. We'll see, see what happens, obviously. We'll see if the bullies get their way, but so anyways, that's the, that's the MPO.
If there were bullies.
Yeah, that's right. Theoretically. Icon, Stephanie Opel, the new executive director for Icon is now, you know, up and running. I think she's been there about ninety days at this point, so she's, she's full steam ahead from everything I've heard. She's doing a great job. The twenty twenty-three audit came in, came in very clean. We've got about a million dollars in surplus that are split between operations and capital. And the projects themselves are underway. Scott Avenue, the main one downtown with the dam mitigation and all that. Because the water levels are so low, they've actually made a lot of progress and they're ahead of schedule right now with that. They're, they're reluctant or hesitant to, to change the, the timelines because we don't know what the weather is going to be like in the spring and it could put, push them back. But as of right now, they're, they're ahead of schedule, at least on that phase. The other components or the other phases are, are in design and bid portions right now. So, so everything's moving along on Icon and so it's in pretty good shape right now. That's it.
What'd you do for breakfast?
Well, I did attend to, I didn't have anything for breakfast, but yeah, we were all at, at the forum. Yeah, that was, looked really good. Chamber Forum and it was a nice event at the Stu Hansen Used Auto Location. And appreciate everyone's attendance and I thought they had some pretty nice attendance and it was a, yeah, pretty laid back event, really.
Eric.
Your Honor.
Well, jumping back to the event this morning, Susan, you were there speaking as well, noting that it'd been ten years since you were elected to city council. So we have a presentation for you and Pete, you want to take a picture of the giving Susan her certificate in appreciation of ten years of loyal service to the city of Clive. So.
That's right. As I was taking that picture, as the council knows, we have changed our recognition, service recognition throughout the year when those recognitions come up. And Susan was appointed in November of two thousand thirteen. So.
Time flies.
Yep. And so we're, that'll count, the council's included with all those service awards. And there is on the back of the sheet, there's just a little dollar amount that gets added to the Clive store that we do for all staff as well as council members when you hit those key ten, five, ten, fifteen year marks. So council's also included in that.
Congratulations.
There you go.
What do you have to report?
Bravo Finance Committee met and they are challenged with selling sponsorships for the upcoming gala. And so there's conversation about, you know, really not too much that can be done this year, but may have to think about what to do about it moving forward. There's also been a recommendation that was accepted by the board to pursue a capital campaign to establish an endowment. And so that will start to be undertaken.
Who's the lead sponsor of the gala this year, Susan?
I don't know.
West Des Moines isn't purging tables for anything anymore.
Interesting.
Really?
Yeah, they've had that stance for about a year or two now.
It's a tremble move right there, guaranteed.
There has been. It's been a little bit of an auditor conversation too. I think there's something we can talk about.
You know, the tables themselves, whether for a community which is lower than what the private sector has to pay are enough of a challenge, but they say we really don't make money on those. It's the bigger sponsorships over and above, and that's where they're especially having some trouble. I think they're projecting attendance at about three hundred less than before. On the other hand, Sally said last year about this time, she thought the same thing, that it was going to end up about there. And by the time the event happened, it worked out okay. But she still sounded like we should be ready to expect that.
Anything else?
No, I did attend to ribbon cutting of the new smoothie. I forget what it's called in the Mercy One Wellness Facility. So spread the word that they're there.
Invision Electric is in the former Palace Space, quite an operation there, pretty impressive. Michael.
Good things. Yeah, this morning was, it was a good event, well attended. I thought interesting space I'd never been in. Taking up some of that commercial industrial space and turning it into indoor car dealership. All attended and well done by the softballs to the electeds today this morning, but.
Except for the dark ones.
Called it the bullpen, but that's all right. Attended ribbon cutting last week. I would trust the bank out there, a beautiful building inside. So, and that was really well attended. I mean, it was standard, it was packed.
It was packed in that lobby.
So that was good to see and, and lots of folks coming in and they did tours and all that. So that was, that was nice. We attended, the mayor and I attended a Metro Waste Authority Board meeting last night and they're wanting to share this with you. On your calendars, everybody put January twenty-third, four to six. Metro Waste will be hosting their first ever kind of legislative reception. They'll be inviting all the legislators from the state of Iowa to come down from the hill down to it from four to six P M. And we'll be inviting every city council member, not just to board members, every city council member, city manager, assistant city manager, and as well as all the other electeds in, in and around the area. The big point of this is that we'll have a big map of the state of Iowa, highlighted in what counties we work within and that we help. So that rural versus urban divide, our messages needs to come to an end. It, your connection is Metro Waste. We work in around twenty-six counties. Dealing with as far as up as Mason City and their recycling and some small towns, Fort Dodge.
Is there going to be a presentation at this or is it just a networking?
Yeah, networking. Y'all talk about your cities, talk about, you know, it's, it's there for all of you to come in and talk about your legislative priorities as well. So take that opportunity to get them all down there. We'll host it, you know, with food and drink.
Where's the location?
At the central office down there at three hundred East Locust. So Matt will send out.
Yeah, I'll send a meeting notice with.
And you'll all get paper invites and email invites from us and from our lobbyists. So, you know, use that opportunity to be a little selfish at your own organizations, your own cities. So it should be nice. We've, we've never hosted something like this, but we're going to give it a whirl and then we'll have a day at the hill too that Metro is sponsoring. And we've invited to partner with us, Lynn County and Scott County. We haven't heard back from them, but they can certainly be partners of it with, so. That is that, that is the last thing I have.
I just sent you that invite to the mayor council list.
I might just tag on to that, but to say I went to the partnerships legislative breakfast a couple of days ago and I'm not sure if anybody else was there from Clive.
I got double booked with the Vision Electric ribbon cutting.
Oh, okay. Well, there weren't any huge surprises, but one thing related to cities was Warren County Supervisor Marks Now stood up and basically said the property tax formula is killing growth areas. And it was interesting to have that come from a Republican member of the supervisors. So he went on then to say, what are they considering doing to streamline governments? You know, looking at some incentives to do more consolidation or something, but nobody answered that question. But I, I just thought that was notable and I happened to see him today and he said he's bringing that up in multiple rooms.
Sounds good.
One of the other big points in their state agenda is a robust defense of TIF for the partnership. So yes, they do have the point and they're about wanting to have a, a low, generally low tax burden in the state. But they also are at the same time saying we, for the cities in particular, TIF has got to be protected. See what comes out of legislation this year.
And one quick update on yard waste for next year, it will be extended through the full month of Metro Waste, the leadership listened to the cries from citizens.
Just a couple of items, Your Honor, related to the Hickman Interchange and we're probably that, now that we moved that meeting on January twenty-fifth back to February first. Trying to maybe target that date to have a full Hickman Interchange update, have Snyder come in. They've been working on some updated graphics. Related to that, we'll have an action item that we're working on with Urbandale and Snyder on taking a swing at one of the bigger grant, federal grant applications with the raised grant dollars. This is, you know, tens of fifteen to twenty million dollar grant request. So this was outside of the scope of what we originally planned with their work on doing grant applications. They've been doing a number of them. There was one on the agenda tonight that were within their scope of putting grant applications together, working with the two cities. This one's a much bigger lift and of much more engaged with our federal delegation, letters of support, things that we're going to be working on and have to have out the door by the beginning of March, if I recall, and the end of February. But this is one where I have an Urbandale, we're in agreement. This is one that worth taking a swing at. If we were able to get it, it would basically wipe the slate clean for us in terms of our costs related to the interchange and we would turn over the grant to the DOT. So we're definitely going to be taking a run at that and there'll be a, a small scope of services to, for that. And Snyder's willing to also kick in some in-kind time to work on the grant application. It's basically a third, a third, a third between Snyder and the two cities. So we appreciate that. That'll be coming forward. Another item that I wanted to mention too, we have kind of a, not full emergency issue, but an issue with our public works facility. We've actually had, been experiencing some pretty significant settling to the point where we're, the front of the building is actually shifted away. And we have major cracks in some of the walls. We've had multiple foundation companies out there looking at it for stabilization purposes, but we could be looking at a twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar expense just to stabilize the issues that we're having. I know the staff is working on it to get multiple quotes and get a handle on how we can stop this. What the foundation companies are telling us is they're seeing more and more of this with the drought and the, the super dry soils starting to shift it around. And we're also, we also think we're seeing that a little bit with our increased water main breaks too with the dry soils. So more to come on that, but likely the January meeting, the January eleventh meeting will likely have something on there for some type of emergency repair.
That building built.
Ah, I'd have to look it up. I don't remember off the top of my head. It was owned previously, city purchased it from the manufacturer. I'd have to, I'd have to pull that information. We, and we'll, we'll have that for you when we bring it back, but that's a unplanned expense. Again, this is part of why we have cash balances and some of our operating funds to deal with those unforeseen expenses that we did not anticipate. So there's some pretty stark pictures of where you can just see the block wall just having a big gap all the way down, starting to peel back. So.
And that doesn't fix itself, but it just gets worse over time.
Exactly. So our, our main goal right now is can we stabilize it so it doesn't get worse and we don't cause more damage to the building and then assess if we need to do more than that. So hard to end with that news other than we won't have a council meeting until January eleventh. So happy holidays to all of you over the next couple of weeks with your families and we, you know, we'll have a few days of, we'll, we'll have city offices closed, but we'll be around if you need anything.
We have a rule in our agency that we end a board meeting in a positive.
I just did. I said happy holidays.
That's why I just never speak at the end. Let's see if Christina has anything and then we'll end with some good news. Christine, anything from you? How are you feeling?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're a little under the weather over here, but we have no legal report, which I think is good news, right? So happy holidays to you all as well.
All right. Thanks, Christina.
Pete? As they do every year, the Lions are super grateful for all the community support they get and it was a wonderful turnout this year.
Forgot about that.
Yeah. Every year, Ed, about this time after we've done it says, hey, not only thank you to everybody in the city who participated, you wanted me to share that, but they always loves it when, when thank you they send out to all the community partners that they could include a letter from the mayor as well on behalf of the city. And so I'll work with you, Mary, to get that drafted and we'll get that out the door, but it's a very special event. I know it's one that's paid a really positive impression on my boys. They've done it with the family guy for two years in a row and, you know, councilman, you had your entire family there too.
I did and it was really amazing and they, it was very eye opening for, for them. I had my older boys drive as well. And then my youngest was with me and the first apartment we went to, single mom was. And then my youngest was with me and the first apartment we went to, single mom with six kids in a two-bedroom apartment. And we walked in and one of the boys was a classmate of my son's. And so it was just really cool and neat. You know, oh, hey, Jack, you know, what way? Just really neat for them to connect and for him to, for my son to see, you know, how lucky you are, right? Things for granted. So, so yeah, it was a, it was a great experience.
Yeah, I'd highly recommend all of you, if you're able to, that it, you see a lot. And it's just good to see what some of those families are going through and then the, and then the joy that they have when you show up with those.
Right.
Multiple baskets.
Talk to them about putting the toys in a bag that can't be seen or something. You know, because I mean, the kids, that's, they immediately just.
They go, they know the toys are coming.
Toys, right? And so they don't, now they don't have it for Christmas because they got it right then, right? So they need to cover those somehow.
I'll talk to Donna about that. It's, it's awesome to see so much evidence of the generosity of Clive residents. It's, it's really awesome.
Each of those baskets, baskets, I mean, there's so much stuff. Literally every one was hundreds of dollars, hundreds and hundreds of dollars to, to give to each of those families. It was, it was pretty amazing.
Well, and they had raised was about thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
I know that, and the community foundation was, it's one of the grants that they gave out during that event.
Yeah, it was really cool. So yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
And on another positive note, Pete and I were at Indian Hills to talk to students about what they would do if they were mayor. And so they submitted, hopefully, entries this past week by the, by the deadline. And so for Lucky, maybe one of them will win. And I think, Pete, you're getting access to the letters.
I've asked Tom Triggsdale, who is the social studies teacher there that helped us put this together, if he's got some great ones, send them our way. We'd love to read them. And if we've got even some time on the council agenda and we've got some students who want to come and get a chance to have that learning experience of talking to you all about their ideas, that would be a good fit too.
I think we should be able to submit something of what we would do.
Okay. One other quick thing, also want to mention the, the mayor's tree lighting and the, they had a really nice event here. I tell you, I really give Parks and Rec and all the departments really did a nice job. It was well-attended, great programming. Everything looked really, really good. So appreciate that.
I appreciate all the good news to overcome what Matt was telling us.
Yeah. That's what I am right here. That's what I do at this table. Just bring y'all down.
So does anyone want to stay here any further or discuss anything? Hearing none will adjourn at eight fifty-three.